Allison. Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintel.
Here.
Mayor Kerr.
Present. All right, we do have a quorum. I want to thank Karen for getting us all set up this morning. And you'll be leaving. Will you come back?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, for sure.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So, welcome everyone to the City of Delray Oaks Strategic Planning Retreat Workshop. Today is February 2nd and it is 8:30 in the morning. I want to just kick it off with a few comments. It has been a long time since we gathered last to do this. And the last time we did, we had no idea. We were just months away from the world's deadliest pandemic and national racial unrest. We also witnessed an unprecedented attack on our democracy. So today, as we kind of move forward, I invite all of you to be curious and creative and think outside of the box. And I also want to welcome any public that is with us and want to remind you that I'll open it up for public comment. This will be the only time that the public, I will ask for public comment for the remainder of the day. So you're welcome to talk about anything on the agenda and/or anything not on the agenda. So on that note, I will open it up for public comment. I see two phone numbers. And I don't have the ability to see a hand raised. So I'm going to ask if call-in user number one has any comments that they would like to share at this time. To unmute via your phone, you use star six. I want to give you a minute if you want to say something.
It's Randy. No.
Oh, hi Randy. Okay. So dramatic. All right, I'm going to move on to the next phone number, which is 901-275-9137. Do you have any comments that you would like to offer the council before we get started?
This is Ken Rutherford. I don't have any comments. I'll make them at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other public joining us, I'd like to turn it over to our facilitator, Marilyn Snyder.
Thank you, Allison. I'm delighted to be back and to see you all. And some of you are new to me and I'm new to you. So thank you for participating. It's my role to make sure, along with the mayor, and she's always good about this, that we start on time so that we're able to end on time and we always have public comment. And one of the reasons that this is not the Zoom webinar is that we need to do small group work like we always do and have over the years as a part of what we call a retreat. I call it a workshop on television. Somehow or another, to call this a retreat is sort of bizarre. So I call it a workshop. But unfortunately, the typical webinar Zoom does not have breakout sessions. So you can't do small group work, large group work. And so that's why we're using that format instead. And I appreciate the fact that the public is here. And of course, the record will be available to you. And just know that I'll try to speak, you know, not too rapidly so you feel left behind. That's my role with the group too, and not too slowly that you're bored. I've never ever had a group say they were bored because I went too fast. I tell this story because it's so indicative of me. I was facilitating for the American College of Physicians doing strategic planning. And at the break, the president, who was a physician, said, "Well, I've now met an A-plus personality." And I said, "Oh, am I going too fast for you?" He said, "Yeah, a little." And I said, "Okay, remember, this is your meeting and that's what I'm telling you all now. This is not my meeting, it's your meeting. So if you need me to slow down or whatever, let me know that because I'm the servant of the group. I'm not the leader of the group." It's also my role to make sure everybody has a chance to participate. And in every group that we facilitate, there are always two or three people that are the really verbal people. So just when I'm face-to-face with you, I'll say the same thing. I don't necessarily call on people in order. If somebody's already had a lot to say, I may wait until I brought in the other people that want to speak and then I'll go back. I want you to know that in advance so you don't think that I'm deliberately avoiding you or that I have any feeling about what kind of comments you're making because that's not true. I will give you breaks. You will have a break for lunch. We are scheduled to go from 8:30 to 2:30 and it'll probably take until 2:30. But it's, you know, hard to tell whether it'll be that long or not. So just know that my role here is to guide you through the process. I don't add ideas, I don't evaluate ideas. You are the experts about Delray Oaks. So the content of the meeting is up to you. The process, I'm helping you with. A very important role is the role of the recorder. That means you don't have to take notes. And what's interesting is I can watch your heads. And if I see the top of your head, I figure you're either emailing or something. So I do hope that we can all keep everybody looking at everybody during the meeting unless there's something urgent. So if you can hold off, just like in our day, face-to-face retreats, hold off to taking phone calls unless it's urgent, I would appreciate it. Yes, Allison, do you have a question?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to ask, how would you like us to interact with you? Do you want us to raise a hand? Do you want us to, you know, you mentioned calling on people. How would you like us to interact with you?
In fact, I am going to get to that because one of the things that I do is I explain the role. But Gail doesn't mind, I'm sure, if I say that now. At times, I'll have you all muted and then other times I'll tell you to unmute. And then just raise a hand, it seems to work better than to do the, you know, the things that are on the bottom and have the little thing. But I try and have as much of a free flow of exchange as possible. So it's a good question, which I was going to come to, but it's fine to say it now. Okay, so Gail Savoy is the recorder and I'm going to have her tell you her role.
Okay. My role is basically a silent one, but my fingers do all the work on the keyboard. And Marilyn at times will ask you for your input during the first half of the meeting. And I will add to your record. I'll be creating your record all day as we work. The only thing that I do ask is that if you see me get something incorrect or wrong or I don't capture your comment correctly, don't hesitate to jump in and get things straight. Correct me right away. And you will have this record within a half an hour after the meeting and for you to distribute. Otherwise, I'm just going to sit here and type.
Thanks, Gail. And now the role of the participants on the screen. Be open, be honest, freely share your ideas. And when it's time to make decisions, be willing to make those decisions by a consensus process. So what we're all about here is it's almost as much about team building as it is about strategic planning. Because you have a city council team and you have a management team. And then together to carry out and develop a strategic plan, you really need to be working as a team. So consensus is not always unanimous, although most of the time it is. What it really means is that if you see the group going in a particular direction and you can support that, even if it isn't your favorite idea, let go so that the group can move on. Because the idea here is for you to collectively walk out and feel like this plan belongs to us. A long time ago, when I first started facilitating, the council would go away and have a retreat. And then they would give the information to the staff and the staff would say, "Gosh, we would have had some ideas on especially on the objectives." Well, you know, that's how it was that time. Then sometimes the staff would go away and give the record to the council. And the council would say, "What do you think we are, a rubber stamp for staff?" So fortunately, things changed and now every retreat we do, and we've worked with over 100 clients, 100, 100 city councils and boards of supervisors. We also work with nonprofits and profits and whatever, it's 100% by referral. So whoever it is that calls. So just know that what we need you to do, open, honest, freely share your ideas and be willing to work with consensus. For the public, because we do have two public members, we're delighted you're here. I'm sorry, this particular process has limitations through Zoom. I'd like to be able to change it. And but I can't be calling on you or having you participate because I've got to focus on working with the group. So I'll try to read things that are on the screen also to make it clear for you. So that's the beginning of what we're doing. And what I'd like to do is start with going over what strategic planning is all about. Because not everybody seems to really understand strategic planning. And so let me just put this on the screen. Strategic planning, I went to the objectives instead of the, sorry, instead of the objectives. I meant to go to the, they moved these all over the screen. This is what's called the strategic planning elements. And what this means is that what we start with, and I want to be sure all of you here that are participants, I know the public can't see the screen, but I'll read it. Can you see the screen all right? Is there any, speak up if you can't. Is there anybody that cannot? Okay, with every strategic plan, you start with what's called the SWOT analysis. What are the internal strengths, in this case of Delray Oaks? What are the internal weaknesses? Internal means you can control it or have a lot to do with being able to resolve it. And then one of the hallmarks of strategic planning is that you're always looking externally as well. What's going on externally? And we look at in your three-year period because your goals that you set were 2019 to 2022. And what's going on that provides you with opportunities and what about threats? Now, every strategic plan needs to have a mission statement. And mission and vision gets mixed up by lots of people. A mission answers two questions. Why does the organization exist and whom does it serve? And you've already got a mission statement. A vision statement is a vivid descriptive image of the future. It's what you want the organization to be or be recognized as or achieve. You also have a vision. Also core values. Core values are guiding principles. And guiding principles are not something you just put on the wall or maybe have on the internet. But there's something that you use in evaluating people. And especially if you're hiring somebody, you want to make sure that they meet those core values. So say there's a core value, team building. And you're interviewing somebody for a job. And what you find out through the interview process is this person is really good. But they are what I call a lone ranger. They like to take all the credit. They're really not into the team. They want to have control. That would tell you that would not fit for you to have on your team. Then goals are what the organization needs to accomplish. So mission is why, goals are what. And so what is it the organization needs to accomplish? They're broad statements of intent and they're consistent with your mission and help fulfill the vision. Your objectives answer how. So why, what, how? How the goals will be addressed? By when, who will be accountable by name or position? Or what specific measurable results or outcomes? And you've done this process so much that you just flow through it. And even though there's new people, I expect that will happen again. Last but not least is the follow-up monitoring process. This is a clearly defined, regular, at least monthly, monitoring process. Ben Franklin said, "If you fail the plan, you plan to fail." And I add on, "If you don't work the plan, the plan doesn't work." I'm amazed when I get called to do strategic planning. How many strategic plans sit on the shelf? And I say, "Oh, do you have a mission statement?" "Yes." "Oh, oh, could you tell me what it is?" "Oh, I'm sorry, let me go look it up." Well, then you know they're really not using it. So this is the framework for what we're doing. Now, what I'd want to do next is to go over the agenda itself. And you got this in advance, as did the public. And this just tells you, you know, how it's going to go, what we're going to cover. You'll notice there's a beginning time, 8:30, and an ending time at 2:30. One thing that I'm very in tune with is staying in being consistent with the Brown Act. At one point, I was appointed by one of the governors of California, I never say which one, to a state governmental board. And I was the president for three years. And one of the things that got drilled into me was the importance of the Brown Act and being very careful that, you know, of the public and being concerned about what comes out. And when you say objectives, not saying by such and such a date, somebody's going to approve something if you wanted to go to the council. So we'll go through all of that when we get to goals. But we already had the welcome and public comment and purpose from Allison. And then I've gone over the roles along with Gail. And this is the agenda. We start with brief introductions. I'm not into touchy-feely things. But this is a part of team building and some of you are new to each other in the role. And so it's always a good way to begin. Then Gail will have on the screen and we'll just go over, read, just read those. Mission, vision, core values, and the three-year goals. Then we do that SWOT analysis. And you all had the questionnaire sent to you and did a good job of sending it back. We usually do that, of course, in person. But it takes up a long time on the agenda. And we decided that what we were going to do is have the questionnaires come instead. So you've got that information. If you forgot something, when we get to the end of one of the questions, I'll ask, "What addition do you have?", if you have one. But Gail has just typed those, and thanks to Karen first. Karen, I'm sorry she's not here to tell her how great she is. I think she already knows that I feel that way. But she typed things up and then sent them to Gail. So we'll look at what are the strengths of Delray Oaks in the last year? Because see, your last retreat was in early March. And then what are the internal weaknesses or challenges? What's going on externally that will have an impact on the City of Delray Oaks in the next two years? Because we already had 1920 and now we're going to 22. Then we'll look at the goals and review them, each one, and make sure that they are still on target. I'll say, you know, they were formed by consensus, so there need to be consensus to change them. And we never recommend more than four or five goals. You'll then identify six-month strategic objectives. And there's the how question, how the goals will be addressed, by what date? Who's going to be accountable for what specific results? And that's within six months. And I used to do one-year objectives with groups. And then I discovered there was a pattern that had come out and that people got a lot done in the first six months and then it really fell off. So I began testing the same groups with one year and six months and discovered that they were twice as productive. This happened, for example, when I was asked, I had did facilitation also as a client for this Centers for Disease Control. And they asked me if I would do a nationwide strategic plan on tuberculosis. You know, you think tuberculosis is being gone. It isn't. If you listen to those ads on TV, they keep mentioning, and if you have tuberculosis. So we got all together and when we got to the objectives, I said, "Now, we're going to be doing six-month objectives." And they said, "Oh, no, no, we're all over the country. That's not going to work." And I said, "Well, that's what the CDC is used to me doing." So, you know, when we did the six-month update, let's see, you know, maybe I'll check in with them if you could do a year. So they were blown away in six months when they came back together at how much they'd gotten done. And they asked, as I knew they would, if they could do one-year objectives. And so CDC said that was fine. And when they came back a year later, they had half as many things accomplished. So and the same thing happened working with Chevron. They did the same thing. They wanted to try a year and ended up going back to six months. So that's, the heart of it is writing the objectives. And the next steps, follow-up process, to make sure that it's being monitored. And then instead of setting the date within six months, we'll have in general the timeframe, because when it would be. But the actual date is going to be set after this. And then summary of the retreat or workshop, closing remarks, and adjourn not later than 2:30. So you can see that it's a full agenda. And the first thing we do is we like to start with a question. And the question today is, in just one sentence, first give your name and your position. And then just in one sentence, what's something enjoyable that you've done during the pandemic? And you might not have had time if you admit for the pandemic. And Gail, are you going to put that in the chat for them?
Yes.
Okay, so you all know about the chat. You just click on that. So she's got now to everybody, your name, your position, and what's something enjoyable that you did. And I'll just call on you as you are on the screen. So Pat, let's start with you.
I'm Pat Lintel. I'm Vice Mayor of Delray Oaks. And I've been able to do more reading and more gardening. And I like to play solitaire. And I'm with a bridge group. And so instead of meeting and seeing each other face-to-face, we now play bridge online. And it's better than not playing, but it's working out well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good. Kim, and then remember, this is something personally you've done, not professionally. So you're right on target, Pat. Kim?
Hi, Kim Shirley. I'm a new city council member. And I would say I've enjoyed most spending time with my family, with my kids. We've spent a lot of time together. But it's been watching some shows. We just finished The Good Place. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but that's been fun. We've just had a good time together. So, and I feel like I've gotten to bond with my daughter, who's 15, who still doesn't mind hanging out with her parents and a little bit more than we normally would have. So it's been nice.
And you have other kids besides?
Yes, I have a 17-year-old who clearly is not into bonding with his parents during the pandemic.
Just the age. Not too young. Okay, thank you. Allison? You'll need to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Allison Kerr. I'm the mayor. The one thing, it's been enjoyable, but it's also been very fulfilling is we started weekly family meetings with my siblings all around the country and my father, who is 85. And it has healed some longtime wounds. It has, we have laughed, we have cried, my brother got COVID, we were all there. It's been wonderful to connect on that level. But it's also been really interesting because we're all around the country. And so we're all experiencing everything a little differently. But if you haven't started it, I would definitely recommend it.
Great use of time. How many siblings do you have?
Three.
Great. Good. Thank you. Alex?
Alex Lurka, City Attorney. This past summer, we were home a lot more. So I have three little boys and that's, you know, a lot of hikes and a lot of excursions and that type of thing. And then my wife and I built two raised garden beds out of some nice reclaimed redwood. And we started on a redwood picket fence. I've got my pickets. I need to sand and sort of get about 250 of them. I've got about 50 of them sanded just from neighbors that tore old fences down. Clients who said, "Oh, I've got a stack for you." So I love doing home improvement type stuff and all that. So it's been nice. And we also built a nice little handrail between the two levels of our backyard. And we didn't tell our parents. It was for their benefit as they.
It would have been dangerous.
But it really was. And, you know, when we meet outside during COVID and stuff, they use it. So it's just nice to get some projects like that done and have a few extra excursions, things like that.
And how old are your children?
11, nine, and five on Thursday.
Wow.
Three boys.
Whole group. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Alex. John?
So similar to Kim, spent a lot more time with my kids. And also binging a lot of shows. And in part, I guess being drawn in by my 15-year-old boy. I've started watching Walking Dead, which I don't think is a good show to watch during the pandemic. It's a little too close to home. But that's part of it. It's been kind of spending a lot more time with the kids. One thing that's been somewhat nice is the Highway 1, when it's not falling into the ocean, is open, a lot more open. And I've got a little sports car that's a lot of fun to kind of go up and down Highway 1. And it's, there's far fewer cars on it. So that's been kind of a nice.
Good. And how many kids do you have?
Two.
And the age of the other one?
12 and 15.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks, John. Scott?
Hi, Scott Donaldson. Just like Kim Shirley, I'm a brand-new council member.
Welcome.
And Pat had mentioned that she's doing gardening. And I would say I've been doing a lot of that lately and I kind of get a twofer with that. I'll be outside working in the front yard and I get to see neighbors that walk by and I really miss that. And so not only do I get to do gardening, but I also get to connect with some of the neighbors as they walk by. And then one of the other things that's kind of nice during the pandemic is we're facilitating my grandson's kindergarten. So you might hear him in the background. He's at Pacific Grove Kindergarten and he's with us. And that gives a great perspective, having him run around. It's a lot of fun.
And that picture of dogs behind your head looks so cute. Is that a dog of yours?
It's not a dog of ours, but my wife raises guide dogs for the blind. Well, she used to. And that's a poster that she received a while back. But she's probably raised, I don't know, maybe 14, 15 guide dogs.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you, Scott. Yeah.
Morning. My name is Jeff. I am the Acting City Manager here in the City of Delray Oaks. And something besides work during the pandemic. I would say that homeschooling has allowed my little ones to visit from Seattle quite a bit more than normal since they can have me as the taskmaster and making sure they're doing their homework while they're staying with me. So seeing them quite a bit more this year has been the best part of the year.
How old are they?
I have a 17-year-old daughter, a 14-year-old, and a 12-year-old.
Great. Thank you. Chris, welcome. We're so glad you were able to come. You'll need to unmute yourself if you would please. And the question that everybody's asked is, what is something enjoyable, personally enjoyable, that you've been able to do during COVID?
Sure. I've been listening. Spending time with family for sure. My wife is working from home. So I enjoy that even though, you know, she's at the table and doing her work, we're still, you know, at least in the same house together and we could take breaks together. And we did a lot of gardening. I am done with this whole COVID thing. So I'm fed up. I've had it. I'm looking forward to.
All in favor, say yes.
Yeah. So, thank you. And I'm currently the Acting Chief. The real chief is the Acting City Manager.
Did you know you were real, Jeff?
That's, I don't even know what my title is these days.
I bet you don't. Well, I hope you've enjoyed that. It's a part of team building, is getting to know each other. And groups get along better if they know each other and have some relationship. That doesn't mean you have to, you know, be in their people's personal lives. But people are just more careful when they know the people that they work with. So that whenever you're in a bad situation like this, meaning COVID, that you have to look for and even comment on positive things so that it helps you to, you know, be positive. Well, thank you for sharing. Now let's look at the next item on the agenda here. On the screen, they decide, Zoom decides to move these all around, that's why. So where we are now is to look at what is the mission, vision, values, and goals? And then we'll move into the SWOT. Now, I'm going to take, turn off my screen and Gail is going to share the screen. There we go. So the mission statement, remember why Delray Oaks exists and whom you serve. The mission of the City of Delray Oaks is to provide quality municipal services to those who live, work, and visit our safe, small town in the sunbelt of the Monterey Peninsula. And your visions, and missions typically don't change. Your vision statement, Delray Oaks will be a unified city with interconnected, welcoming, and thriving neighborhoods, parks, and a vibrant downtown. Then the core values, and I mean, there were probably 20 values. And then I took the group through a consensus process. And the values are not intended to be in priority order. But typically, there's between five and seven. I don't know why that is. And it doesn't matter whether it's a governmental group or a corporate group or a nonprofit. That seems to be about the list. And these are not, again, in priority. The City of Delray Oaks values fiscal responsibility, honesty and integrity, open communication and transparency, ethical behavior, and responsiveness to community needs and concerns. Now we'll look at the three-year goals that we'll be reviewing and seeing if. Now we'll look at the three year goals that we'll be reviewing and seeing if those still are important goals. And they were set in 2019. One year goals are not strategic and typically two years, if you have, three years is about right. One of the clients and actually is the biggest client that we work for is the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. They have 10,000 employees. And so we do between 12 and 14 retreats for them for per year. Because there's a power retreat and there's a water retreat and there's an IT retreat. And so the key, the key here is with the three year goals, you you want to make sure that those goals are ones that that people understand and that they're related to. So these are not in priority order. Ensure fiscal stability, update the city's general plan, beginning with the housing element, develop city owned properties sustainably with public input, and enhance the city's effectiveness and efficiency. So I'll go back to the next item, which is to review the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and threats, which Gail has next on the screen. Not right now, we're in just a minute here. So I'll just read these, knowing that the public is not able to see them. Now, these are, these were brainstormed by all the participants coming to to this workshop. And so you don't know who said what. They've just mixed in. There's some duplications because sometimes people said the same thing. Brain, anytime you brainstorm, that means you do not evaluate. A brainstorm is to then lead to something. And in this case, it's leading to the development of the goals and objectives. So I'll just read them as they appear on the screen. And again, these are brainstorm perceptions from all the participants. When I get to the end of the strengths and the weaknesses and the opportunities and threats, I'll ask, is there, what else do you feel needs to be added? If you do, and if you don't, then that's fine. Okay, adjusting as well as can be expected to life and work under COVID. Having high quality and safe parks for healthy activity during COVID. This is in the last year, strengths and accomplishments. Increased transparency via the website and processes. Continued increase of civic participation, quality staff and city manager, fiscal vigilance, quality police department, successful in investigations and arrests and detective work, city infrastructure aesthetics, local business retention, small town charm, city hall improvements, responsiveness to residents, city landscape being greatly improved, stair slash walkway safety and quick response by public works, passing of a FORTAG, F O R T A G, solar panels on city hall, volunteer groups to support the needs of the city. And then Gail. Okay. Now, what, if anything, would you like to add to the list? Remember, these are internal accomplishments or strengths. They are things that you could can do, did did something about in the last year. We want to give you an opportunity. If you thought of something, you know, since you filled out the questionnaire or you've heard the public say something, let's get it up. And if you can say it fairly slowly, because Gail has to type at the same time. So unfortunately, when the screen is on, I can't see you. I can only see three other people besides myself on the side of the screen. So if you could just say your name and indicate that you want to say something.
Marilyn, it's Alex. I would add that we were successful in defending a couple of lawsuits with with at a very early stage.
Okay, great. Successful defending a couple of lawsuits at a very early stage. Thank you, Alex. Yes, John.
It kind of inspired me. I think we've also made headway on coming to an agreement with one of our, with Naval Plant Society on on our road. And that's, I think that was a big change from from the last two years. We haven't come to an agreement, right? Making headway. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, right.
Thank you for reading it because it's it's got to be accurate.
Tell me, roads in building a road in doing what with the road? I I miss that little piece.
We've just come to an agreement with with the Naval Plant Society on on a property they're interested or a parcel, a piece of land they're interested in.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Pat Lintell.
Yes, Pat.
We've seen improvements in city hall in the arrangement of offices, et cetera, and it's quite nice.
Okay. And we'll just wait till Gail scout that typed and we'll ask if there's anybody else. Arrangement of offices is quite, are quite, it's quite nice.
Marilyn, it's Alex. I might add as as well as I think the city didn't skip a beat when we granted a leave of absence to Dino Pick. We were able to to keep keep going, I think, pretty seamlessly.
Good. Been good work by Jeff.
How do you spell his last name?
P I C K.
P I C K.
Oh, just the way it sounds. Okay. C K. Good.
Anybody else? Feel free.
Marilyn's Jeff.
Hi. Okay, good, Jeff.
I would say that after consolidating with the airport police almost three years ago, we have kind of leveled out and increased the ability to attract and or recruit and retain quality police officers. We're at a much higher level now, including several really professional experienced reserve officers that we didn't have in the past.
Okay, after consideration with the airport police, we've increased the ability to recruit police officers. Okay, anything else?
I think we've had strong interest and strong participation in our sign ordinance committee.
Just call out your name since I can't see you.
Oh, sorry, it's Alex.
That's okay. You're the one, you're one of the three people. Now it's down to two. I never know who I'm going to see. But I only see four and it's always includes me who I do not need to see myself, but I think I do. Okay, what else?
Marilyn, it's Scott Donaldson. I just thought of something, the improvement to the cannabis dispensary.
Okay.
The building and the landscaping.
Okay. Looks like a lot of good things going on. Anything else that needs to be added?
Marilyn, Jeff, again, I'd say the additional Randy on our staff is his his work ethic and his his work capacity and his technical skill. Randy's Randy's really helped out the city staff in the office.
I'm sorry. You want to just add, Gail? First, first step, he's really helped out in our office.
This is, this is Allison. I'd also like to echo that about Karen. There's been a lot of transition and she has really been solid and steady.
Okay, let's describe her. Doesn't. Okay, anything else?
Pat Lintell, resolution of the reimbursement required by Dan Dawson.
Is that spelled right? Is it Dawson?
Dawson is D A W S O N.
Somehow or another. Okay, what else? Not that this isn't enough. You've got done a great job. You think about the pandemic. Goodness. Jeff, don't hesitate. Don't feel like you're saying too much. If you've got some other things you want to add, feel free.
No, you know, I, one, one of the things I'm with Karen and Randy, just staff, organizing city hall to a much higher level. We're embarking and are down the path of a really good records management process. We're redoing all the records in the city hall and it's, there's a lot of work to do, but they've they've really hit the ground running.
All right, now the strategic plan strengths is what you're building on. You always look back. It's it's just like doing the questionnaire. The question that I ask you for introductions, what's been going well in the pandemic? And here, you know, you had a lot of things and you also see that the city's been very productive. All right, now we're going to go down to the internal weaknesses or challenges.
Marilyn, Kim Shirley had her hand raised.
See, I can't see anybody's hand.
I know. That's why I mentioned.
Thank you. I was going to say, thank you, Allison. If anybody sees that, you know, I'll have you raise your hand when we're doing it. If we're, in fact, you hardly ever have to raise your hand. But when the, when I've got the screen on, I can't see people. So I'm really sorry. Please go ahead. Thank you.
That's okay, Marilyn. Yeah, this is Kim. I want to say in the beginning of the pandemic, Dino was reaching out and doing letters to the residences. And I feel like our mayor has also been reaching out to the residences and providing lots of information about the pandemic. So I think increased communication has been a positive thing.
I'm glad, I'm glad you saw that, Allison. Did anybody else speak up if I missed you? This is just one thing I'd like to have Zoom change so that this didn't take the whole whole screen. All right, now we also, it's also important to look at internal weaknesses. And remember, this isn't a consensus list, but perceptions are important.
Marilyn, this is Kim. I just need to interrupt. Can we go back?
To what?
And so I, as I mentioned, that the mayor continues to reach out. Not that Jeff isn't specifically, it's okay. The mayor has been, has been reaching out to to residents.
Thank you. We always appreciate corrections because this is the only time you get to make them. Once it's out, it's gone.
Right, right, right. Okay.
All right, now, now let's look at the current weaknesses or or challenges. And this is again brainstormed. I'm saying this for the public. This is not, this is not something that's consensus. Everybody did these questions themselves and then they just got typed straight the way they were. Open city manager position, losing businesses and effect upon the budget, COVID illness, cannabis, cannabis reliance, retaining new businesses, it would be difficult to retain new businesses, balanced development and environment, airport relationship, staff manning compensation, vision for Fort Ordland consensus, transition from campaigning to governing, divided city, Kim's departure, various vocal small group of residents that don't trust staff, misperception of city staff's intentions and motivations, impact of fora demise, lack of affordable housing, homelessness, south boundary road challenges, mayor's groups are not officially recognized by by the city that take up staff time, large debt and lack of diversification in revenue, need a permanent city manager and police chief. General plan needs major updates. Are there others, Gail?
And there's one more.
Oh, one more. Conflict with Garden Center and next steps for the Work Memorial Park. What additions would anybody like? Just speak up your name and speak out your name.
Marilyn, oh, I'm sorry, Pat. Go ahead.
Okay, Pat. The one that's on there I would like to emphasize more, and that's divided city. That's part of our vision is to unify the city. And yet, in the last couple of years, it's become extremely divided.
All right. And then Alex, you wanted to say something too?
Yeah, costly lawsuits, costly litigation. Is is a weakness, especially in my view, if there had been some sort of proactive dialogue with the city. I think we could have avoided litigation with, you know, you can't choose who's going to sue you. But because some of our our plaintiffs have chosen litigation over communication, it's been costly for the city. And that's difficult.
So it's litigations plural or litigation single?
It's been litigations. There's been a few in this past year and some ongoing.
Okay, so so we'll put an S on that one, Gail. Litigations. And, okay, and then more something just needs to be separated up above a divided city, more so is running together. There we go. Okay, what else? What else is, and remember, this is internal, it's something that has an impact. Yes.
Jeff, I I just like to point out the need for the permanent city manager and police chef. Now I am all for getting for our police department. Wouldn't complain.
So the chef, it has to be chief instead of chef? Golly, I thought you had, I thought you got.
Unless the city's willing to.
I'm, I missed that. I'm glad you noticed it. Okay, who, anybody have anything else?
Marilyn, it's Scott Donaldson.
Yes, Scott.
One of the things I just thought of was meeting housing demand. I just had a discussion yesterday with the executive director of Ambag. And we talked about the requirement for our affordable housing. So I I think that not only is a challenge right now because we just updated our housing element, but pretty soon we're going to get additional numbers on that. So, yeah, I think you captured it well that, you know, meeting that housing demand.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Marilyn, I think an important one for that's Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The the work capacity of our small staff is many times exceeded by the work demand. And, you know, we have to prioritize things and in additionally with that, or I don't know if it's the same thing, but the perception that staff's not responsive. No, we're responsive. We just need to prioritize things. So inability to get the things done when people think they should, you know, in I won't say inability.
Perception.
Yeah, perception that staff isn't working on things when we are. It's just they have to be prioritized.
And is it the perception of the public?
I think it's perception of the public. Sometimes it's perception of, you know, council. I I think the council understands, but just making sure that they, you know, the communication between myself and council, so they know what we're working on and we have to put on the on the back burner.
Okay, good. Anything else anybody wants to say about this before we go to external?
May I clarify that? It's not just that the staff isn't working. It sounded like it was more that you're not working on their priorities or you're not working hard enough. How would you clarify that?
I guess I would say a misunderstanding that the staff isn't addressing issues in a timely manner based upon our workload. It's a discussion we have, you know, internally is, you know, what do we, what do we have to prioritize, you know, and then when a new idea comes up or something's discussed in council, the next day, expectations are that we'll jump right on that one. That may be have to be pushed out of, you know, a week or two to to address properly.
Jeff, this is Allison. Is it a matter of responsiveness? Timely responsiveness? Is that where the rub is?
The the perception of timely responsiveness. Yeah, yeah, no, I would say that's that's probably a better way to to clarify that. I was trying to think of the the articulate words. But you know, sometimes if if there's a matter that comes before council, it may be two weeks before we can talk to all the partners involved to to move forward on that. But, you know, within a few days, we're getting, you know, questions about.
Yeah, we'll leave, we'll leave both of them because both of them, yeah. All right, anything else anybody wants to add before we look externally what's going on that first will hurt and help and then potentially hurt?
Well, this is Pat. And I think we included Kim's leaving, but now it's also Dino's leaving.
All right, sounds like, sounds like we're finished with that for now. So let's go ahead and look at the external factors that will or might have a positive impact. And that could be anything. It could be economic, demographic, political, social, environmental, technological. So this is brainstorm, no, no attempt to get consensus, just how people perceive the external factors in the next two years of this three year plan. A new president, political stability, less divisive, COVID vaccine, FORTAG, parks funding, cannabis demand, economic prosperity, water supply solution, citizen involvement. parks funding, cannabis demand, economic prosperity, water supply solution, citizen involvement, more young family, families moving, moving here, grant availability, vaccine, improved possibility that pure water expansion will move forward. So as you think about what's going on now, and you're anticipating over the next two years, what else, if anything, comes to mind that could have a positive impact, or is already having a positive impact on Delray Oaks?
This is Pat, settlement of some of the litigation.
Okay. Settlement of some of the litigation.
Okay, I didn't hear that. That's, resolution is fine.
All right, somebody else? What else is going on externally? It could be locally, it could be statewide, it could be nationally, it could be internationally.
This is Kim, I'm, I'm really enjoying the county COVID updates on Monday. I feel like they're communicating pretty well.
Anything else?
This is Allison, I want, there is an increased regional collaboration efforts, at least at the level of, of mayors.
All right, among the mayors then.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else before we go to external threats? Okay, let's look at what's been listed as external threats. These are external factors or trends that will or might, you know, there's some that you're clear they will, and some, some you think they might have a good chance of having a negative impact on Delray Oaks in the next two years. COVID-19, economic turndown, airport expansion in relationship, lawsuits, litigation, social and political divisiveness, climate change, domestic terrorism, cannabis competition, cybersecurity threats, water availability, not in my backyard attitude, wildflower fires, floods, earthquakes, quality staff leaving, crying. What else needs to be added, if anything?
This is Pat, oh, homelessness, sorry, that's on there.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I, oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize the screen, screen moved. Homelessness, let me look at that again.
When I added from above, it pushed my margins down, okay.
Oh, okay, negative impact of the pandemic on our economy, not knowing when the pandemic will end. Was that the end of it, Gail?
Yes.
Okay, what other, what other things currently, or you anticipate in the next two years, could have a negative impact?
This is Kim, the vaccine rollout not going smoothly and not being available to everyone.
Anybody else? Before you're too depressed. This is always the depressing list. Okay, now, what I've always encouraged is that you put the list of positives on the website, along with, it varies from, from city to city as to whether or not you put the objectives, but a number of, of people put on the mission, the vision, the values, the objectives, as, as well as the goals. But the external positives, it's not only helps you realize how much you've gotten done in spite of really difficult circumstances, but it also lets the public know. All right, I'm going to take the screen, and I'm going to go back now to the agenda, so you can see where we are. So. All right, Gail, do you want to close your screen off? There we go. And now I'm going to go back to the agenda. I'll keep coming back to keep you oriented as to where we are. So you can see, we've made a lot of progress from mentioning the mission, vision, values, and goals, the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and threats. It's time for us to look at the three-year goals. And remember, goals are broad statements of intent. You, you always start with an action verb, and you avoid words like through or by as a part of the goal, because anything that follows the words through or by is how you're going to carry out the goal, and those are objectives. So they're, they're typically, you know, very succinct. So let's look at those goals that we have, and I'll stop sharing my screen here, Gail.
Oh, do you want me to bring up?
Bring the goal, the three-year goals up, and I'll go through them one by one. In fact, maybe you could put, I wonder if it'd be easier in the chat, then I could see everybody. Is that, can you do that, please?
I'll see if I can do a copy paste here.
All right. Doesn't, doesn't want to highlight them all.
I just have a hard time with this computer and tracking.
Okay, well, we could just work from here.
There we go.
All right, let's see.
This might work.
And if it doesn't, we'll just look at.
I can't find the chat.
You know what we'll do is, well, I'll just start with the first one, and we won't try to look at all four of them at once. You can leave it on. All right, the, the first one, but it's not in priority order, remember this, they're a package. So my question to all of you would be, and, and Gail, I'll take away the screen, so I can look at people and get their nonverbal as well as their verbal. So if you can take your screen away for just a minute. Do you think it's still important over the next two years that you ensure financial stability? Okay, and what we do is, I just, I just look at you and say, they, all of these were formed by consensus. So there would need to be consensus of the group to, to change them. And it's very common that they don't change. Now, I remember in the 20, 2006, 2009, or eight, nine, time of, of the, the financial, bad financial time, I can remember a city had enhance and, enhance and maintain our infrastructure and facilities. And the group looked at that and said, we still have to maintain it, but there's no way we can enhance it. So, you know, it's oftentimes something like that that causes it. Okay, now, Gail, we'll look at the next goal. Okay, you've got them on the chat. Could everybody open your chat?
I don't have them.
Oh, you don't, okay, that's okay. Go back to the goals, and we'll look at that. So update the city's general plan, beginning with the housing element. Now, let's take that away, and is that still something that you need to be doing? Is the housing element done?
Well, it's, it's an ongoing process, so the, the cycle that, that, that goal was for was completed, but we were not done.
Is there a way that, that, is the wording still appropriate?
Yeah, I think it is, I think it fits.
Yeah, I'm seeing head nodding.
Yeah, and this is, this is Scott, I agree with that. And even though, like John said, we just finished one of our housing elements for, for that cycle, we're, we're gonna get another one here very soon. We're gonna have to go through that same process again.
Good, great.
We're out of compliance until the next one.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I just want to offer a, a potential for expansion of this. I think the, the general plan is our visioning tool, but I would also love to see the municipal code updated, because that is really how we do things day in and day out. And it is, it is, it needs some, some updating.
Alex, I noticed you were nodding your head on that, you want to say something?
There is, there's many times where I go to consult the municipal code in response to a question from individual council members of council, and it's out of date. Some of the verbiage is in there, out of date, and, and compels the city to do things of the city from just a different time and a different era. So I think there would be value in.
And with your expertise as an attorney, can you say what kind of an impact that might have on staffing and, and finance, and what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely going to take some, some staffing and finance to get that done. I think the result would be answers to questions that come up, being more defensible, being, maybe be more clear. A lot of times, when we look at things that aren't addressed, or addressed sort of in a different way in municipal code, you know, we fall back on, well, how have we always done it? Because to make a change midstream might subject the city to liability, but it would be an opportunity for the council to really have their druthers on, on certain things and how it's handled.
Okay, other comments about that?
I, I, you know.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Not that we want to have a lot of goals, but, Mayor, I think that's a standalone goal.
Yes, yes, that's what I was going, that's where I was going, Jeff, you're right on target.
There's, there's.
You're going to have a fifth goal.
There's two different outcomes to that, and I think a standalone goal. The other thing is, is sometimes the, some of the things in the code are contradictory as well. Difficult to work.
Okay, then what's the action verb? That will describe what you're going to do with the municipal code over the next two years?
How about review and revise or update, or?
That, review and revise, update? Okay, which one do you want? Review and revise or update?
So I'd like to, before we do that, I'd like to hear from Pat and Scott.
Okay, Pat and Scott.
Yeah, I agree, I think that it should be a standalone goal. And as a matter of fact, I think maybe we need to make the general plan and the housing standalone goals, even though they're intertwined, those are big muscle movements that take not only a lot of time and resources, but mainly a lot of money. I mean, just to update the housing element, we receive probably between the LEAP and the REAP grants $120,000 to, to update those. So that, those are, are big, big events. And so maybe I, I, I agree with Jeff, that, you know, the idea of standalone objectives for those makes a lot of sense.
Okay, we'll come back to that issue. Pat, you wanted to comment?
I'm in total agreement with Jeff and Scott have said, as well as John.
Okay, so we've got review and revise the municipal code, or just update the municipal code? You're gonna.
Review and revise sounds good, because, because we, we need to, we need to know where to start, and then we need to know what to fix.
Review and revise, okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, now, I want to go back to, well, let's, let's go back to splitting in just a minute. Let's go to the, the next goal, and you'll see that in the chat. I think you've already put the next goal in the chat this time, Gail?
Yes, they're all up there.
Okay, just hit, hit chat, and you'll see the three-year goals, say, ensure fiscal stability, which you agreed, update the city's general plan, beginning with the housing element, develops city-owned property, let's see, we did review and revise the municipal code, because that came out of this, develop city-owned properties sustainably with public input. Is that still a goal, to be developing city properties?
Yeah, yeah, I would agree, yeah. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a key component to how we address the, what we come up with in our housing element. So, yeah.
Okay.
Same, same here, I agree.
Okay, the rest of you, and, and, and all of you, whether you're, whether you're city council, or whether you're, you know, management team, feel free to hop in, because it, this belongs not just to the council, it belongs to the council management team. So any of, any of you want to have any other comments about that? All right, let's look at the next one.
Can I, can I just say, so this is, we're just looking at, this is in the next year, right?
No, this is until 2022, because these are three-year goals, but the objectives are the next six months.
Right, this year would be for the next year, because we changed them in 2022?
No, we're, yeah, we're reviewing and revising for, to 2022. So it'd be this year, see, you've only done one year, that was 1920, then there's 2021, then there's 2122. So we're looking ahead two years.
Kim, these are just for the overarching?
Yeah, right.
And then we'll talk about the objectives for, yeah, as a shorter amount of time.
But it's good to ask that question, Kim.
Okay, okay.
Glad to hear your questions.
All right, thanks.
Okay, let's go back and look at the list again, hit, hit the chat. So we've got ensure fiscal stability, update the city's general plan, beginning with the housing element. We're going to talk about that a little more. Develop city-owned properties sustainably with public input. You still think you need to enhance the city's, city's effectiveness and efficiency? What do you think? Let's talk about that. Is that still a goal?
Absolutely. And that's a, that's a, that's a multi-year process. Just, just redoing our records will probably take us the next couple of years, and maybe longer if we want to get something that we can do an online searchable version of those things. That's, takes a long time to clean out 20 years' worth of closets, so to speak.
Yeah, let's go back to, as we talk of this discussion about the general plan, could we go back to the document itself now for a minute? And that'll be on your screen. Okay, so we've got, and we're going to add that one. Gail, go ahead and add that. We've got ensure fiscal stability, we've got update the city's general plan, beginning with the housing element. We're going to talk about that. Develop city-owned properties sustainably with public input, enhance the city's effectiveness and efficiency, and review and revise the municipal code. And what we try to do is keep you within five goals. Now, the general plan, for those of you that were here for that in 2019, it was agreed that the general plan was way too big. I mean, there's a number of elements in the, in the general plan, and that this is as much as you can do. I would suggest that you take a look at the, the time and, and energy and money, if you make this more. In other words, I don't recommend six goals. Every group I've ever had that did six goals, they came back to five. So I want to know if, if you're going to leave it this way, or you're going to change that somehow.
This is Allison, I think it, the current goal encompasses the fact that, of course, we all want the general plan updated, long-term. And I, and I also think that the housing element is the one piece that is required that, you know, the state is making it a, a forced priority for us. So I think it's, I, I, I think it's fine as it stands. I think it all depends on our fiscal stability, right? How?
And your staffing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, are, are the rest of you comfortable with leaving that as it is for now?
I am, I, I want, I want to recognize Scott's concern, but I, I think for right now, for the next three years, I think this, this fits the bill.
Anybody else want to say anything?
I, this is Kim, I, I agree, I think we should keep it the way it is. We will eventually need to update the general plan, especially as we look to develop properties, so they're, they're strongly connected. But I, I cannot see it being a standalone goal at this point.
All right, if all of you are okay with this, these will be the three-year goals going forward with the addition of a new one regarding.
I'd like to hear from Pat before we move on, please.
I like, I like the, the composition of the three-year goals, I, I think it's very good. The, the enhance the city effectiveness and efficiency, that's going to be an ongoing thing. I can't ever imagine removing that from the, from a goal.
Okay, anybody else want to give input? It's, once again, I can't see you, so, and all, all of you, I want all of you to feel equally able to speak up, if you want to speak up. Is there anybody else that wants to say anything? Okay, then what I'm going to do is I'm going to move you to another, another screen. And that is where we are. Where, where we are now, you've gone through, you've gone through now, all the way down here, and this is the bulk of the day. Particularly because the group is small, I mean, like, like LADWP, the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, I had to convince them that I really needed to have only 20 instead of their usual 40 to 50 in a retreat. Because then you have multiple screens, and it's just, it's really difficult. You have a small group, and so what we need to do is you will, you will in small groups develop objectives for each one of the goals. And as a result. And as a result, you need to do, because there are not that many of you, we need to do just a couple of goals at a time instead of doing them all at once. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be doing this process of developing the objectives. And what I'm going to do is now show you a screen that has to do with explaining. Writing objectives for those of you haven't haven't had that opportunity. This is talking about how are the goals going to be accomplished? Here's a format guideline, every objective needs to be smart. Smart stands for S, specific. M, measurable. A, attainable. R, relevant. T, timely. Now, the format is that by what date, who by position or name. Is going to be accountable for what measurable results, and that means people that are in this workshop, not people that aren't here. So if it's somebody that you happen to have that is not in in the workshop, then you give it to whoever it is they report to. Here's an example, I made a really simple example. By March fifteenth, you have a date, the finance director will update the board on the budget. Okay, so the when should be the first or the fifteenth of the month, unless there's a specific date that's needed, such as a board meeting. So up here, it would be by, let's say, by April first. By name, who will be accountable for what result? Or it could be, if it was something that needed to have action by the city council, it might say. At the April third city council meeting, I'm just making this up. The city manager will present to the council for action or consideration. Direction, not for approval. If you put in here for approval and the group agreed agreed to it, then that's as though you have pre-agreed to it. Which is is against the Brown Act. That would be that you were having things that you were making decisions on in this in this workshop, that you can't do that. You've you've got to, you've got to indicate that that from this workshop comes what's going to be presented to the council. But what what are you looking for from them, it may be just a report. But you don't want to ever say for approval. So that the date then would change because it would say a city council date, or maybe there was a specific event that had a specific date. The reason you use the first or the fifteenth of the month. Is because the most important thing about doing this process is the follow up. And so whoever is in charge of the particular objective needs to turn into, I assume Karen, by the twenty second of the month. Is this objective done? Is this objective on target, that means the date's right, it's moving forward, or does this objective need to be revised? For example, maybe more research is needed. So July fifteenth, because a month from now would be August the second. And you want it to be within that six months, so sometime between the fifteenth and the second, and that will be decided after this week, after this workshop. The name, the who, is city council and management team members who are present at this workshop. So a management team member, you list their position, like, like, for example, city manager or police chief or, you know, whatever. If it's a council member, you put the name, if it's the mayor, you say the mayor. The public, you know, is familiar with the name, and probably because it's a small city, and I grew up in a very small city, so I understand this in Kansas. You know, they may well know the names of all of the of the management team members, but that's that's how we do it. Now, what you're going to do is you're going to go into breakout sessions. And in the breakout session, you're going to get to volunteer for, and we we can't have more. Oh crap, Alex, I'm going to need your help, because we, can we in a breakout session have more than two council members? Or because three are are would three make it illegal?
I think if if the public could hear and sort of. Know what was going on amongst the three, that that would be okay.
Okay, and the counts and the and the public can, I do put public in these groups, so.
Yeah, as long as it, you know, it's, you know, the analogy, the analogous is to the physical, when we do this physically. You know, if the public's there can hear what's going on, I think that's okay. So as long as they can see and hear what's going on in the groups, I think that's fine.
So there are no public in attendance at this point?
Yeah, that is that is that is that a problem?
As long as the video, the the public can go back and and review the video. You know, again, the analogies to to the to the physical room, if the public can go back and hear and see everything, I think we're okay, as long as we don't go. Behind closed doors, if you will. That'll be okay. So in reviewing this, maybe it's just easier to have two, two and and one.
Marilyn, are you thinking of of dividing us into five different groups or?
No, well, see, we're not able to be doing that, you want to have, Allison, at least three people in a group, there's a synergy. So what I'll be doing is, I I think what I'm going to do is do what you're suggesting. Do two, two and one, so what we would do now is you'll go into a small group and and. In this case, what I do is I I I put up the the number of rooms, which would be two, and then your names are there, and then I ask which ones you want to work in. And that's where you are, and if there were public here, they would get into that room too. So what you do is you go into the small group, you have a recorder, somebody in there is taking notes about the objectives. And then when the when the volunteer, when when you're through with, you're going to have thirty minutes for that, about twenty five minutes. You're gonna, the recorder will go out of the meeting and send to to Gail in the chat, the two or three objectives for the goal. So what you'll do is you'll indicate your goal's name and number, and number each objective chronologically. So what I'm going to do, you know, Gail, I think what I'm going to do is go ahead and give them a break now. Are you there? Can you hear me?
I'm here.
I think what I want to do is get you into your groups, but give you a chance so that you can have that that work. It's fortunate that we're at this point, because we've got to go three rounds, that takes a lot more time. So let me just stop here for a moment, and I'm going to go to breakout rooms, and I'm only only going to ask for two rooms. So. What I'm going to do is we're going to man, I'm going to manually put those there, and we're going to create the rooms. And then, Gail, let's just take them the way they appear on the on the screen, what? The first one, give us a a one word summary. That would be stability? I don't have the goal. Fiscal, okay, we'll make this fiscal, that means that's the fiscal goal. You'll see how this is in a minute. Okay, and the next breakout room, we're going to do is the next one, and I'm not seeing the screen.
Housing.
On chat. Housing, okay, yeah, but I can't be looking at both. Oh, so so housing? Yeah. All right, I'll put housing there.
Could I offer a suggestion based on Alex's determination about the Brown Act? Because there's five council people, can we have the first group with only two council people? Go into the breakout room, and then the the group with the three be on the main screen, so we are recorded.
Oh, the 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 recording, this is only the second time I've been asked to do recording, but the recording will record one of those, it records one of one of them automatically.
So we, it, so it sounds like we need to ensure that the one with the three people in it is the one that's being recorded.
And you know, that's something I don't think that we can control. So. I.
I think we can if we stay on the main screen rather than going into a breakout room.
Maybe, yeah, I I don't know. Okay, then let's. Yeah, that I that, well.
I think that's pretty pretty easy, mayor, I think if if the three council and whoever they're assigned with. Just stays where they're at, and we just assign that as the breakout room, so it's recorded, I.
That may, that may work, Allison, I haven't, I have not run into this before. Let's go ahead and see who who is going, I I want two council members that are willing to work on fiscal.
Allison.
Okay, Allison.
I'll go.
And who's the other one? John?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and then and then I want at least two people that are. Staff, well, is this going to work, how many staff do we have?
One, Alex.
Three, see? Okay, so I guess we could have one, one working here. With the fiscal group and then the other two staying, John, which one would, Jeff, I mean, which one would you want to work in?
Fiscal is probably the the proper.
Best one, okay, so then we've got Allison and Jeff and John, all right? And what you're going to do is you're going to work on.
Go into the breakout room.
And the breakout rooms, they, thank you for that idea, Allison, because I haven't had a group this small. Since I've had to do it on on Zoom. Okay, and then the rest of you would stay.
If Alex and or Chris, which topic you would prefer to work on?
There's only two, there's only two. Okay, we've got, we've got Allison, we have you, and we have John, and you're both council members, we're not doing three. So we've got the two for fiscal. And so that what that means is that the others of you will be left on the screen and here. Now, let me just, let me just explain to you the the process, first of all. Did you all bring, as Karen sent to you and asked you to bring, the. The matrix that showed the progress on at the last time?
Yeah.
Good, because what you're going to do, the very first thing you're going to do is you're going to look at what's on the first one now. Ensure fiscal stability. Is only has as two that are left over that weren't done. And so what you do is you look first at what was done, as to educate yourself and what was done. We do not suggest that you do more than two or three objectives. Unless, if you carried, say, over those two, you might, you might want to do maybe two more. But what we don't want is, we want you to be sure that you're cognizant of the time it takes to the council and the staff. To carry these out, so we're looking for, really generally speaking, two or three objectives only for each goal. But if you've got carryovers, you know, you can add, you can add at at least one. But just be careful, because remember, this is six months, and the and the, you know. The COVID is not gone yet, and you know, who knows whether it'll be gone, you know, in the summer. But what you'll be doing is you'll, one of you here will agree to record. The objectives, and unfortunately, Zoom does not allow you to put it in the chat. And then go out, because if you do that, it doesn't work. So whoever is the recorder, when you're through with your time, then you go out and put it in the chat. So I think that the best thing to do is give you a break from this, so that I can go over this, I want to summarize. But just know that the three of you, what will happen is you'll end up getting put into the breakout session, you'll have to click join meeting. And then the three of you will get get into a separate or location. And be sure, first of all, you get a recorder and you write each of the objectives, and if it's a carryover objective, you don't just say number four, a change to this, you need to write out the entire objective. But we'll, I'll review that with you, I think this is a good break time.
Marilyn, before we, before we go on break, so the first two we're doing is fiscal stability and what else?
Yeah, you're you're doing.
General plan?
Yeah, general.
I I would, I I think what the mayor wanted to determine, I would suggest that Chief Berquen come into fiscal stability with us. Because I think that's more appropriate for his role.
Oh, okay.
Will help him out more, so.
All right, there we go, okay, so now now it's Allison, Chris, Jeff and John. Okay, so let's just do a quick summary. Introductions. Look at mission, vision, values and goals, identify your strategic objective and got consensus on goals, that says how well you're working together. You know what, you haven't been, you haven't been in the meeting that long yet, so you're doing a really good job. I'm looking at my. Clock here, and let's take a break until ten after ten, okay? And then we're not doing groups yet, ten after ten, come back and be ready to go, all right?
And I'd like to point out, Chris has had a busy day already, I think he's already recovered a stolen car and caught a theft suspect, so.
Oh, let's applaud Chris. Way to go, Chris, good.
Thank you very much, I may or may not participate depending on how the rest of my day goes, so.
I can imagine that that is true, all right, I'm going to pause the recording right now, because we don't need to record that, all right, thank you.
Objectives under this goal, update the city's general plan, beginning with the housing element. So the first objective is to present to the city council the status on the consolidation of background materials for developers. I actually was confused with this one, because this doesn't seem like it it belongs in this goal, it seems like it belongs in the following goal.
Yeah, I think that that's right, me, I'm I'm trying to recall when we did this.
Because when you're talking about developers, that doesn't have anything to do with the housing development.
Right, right. I I think the the idea was to get input from developers as to what they maybe saw happening out on the option parcel out in Fort Or. And then having that inform the the general plan was what happened last time, other people, I think, are of the mind that we ought to be the one to develop. What we want out of there and then, you know, match the developer to that, so. That that was the thinking previously, but I I agree that it does touch a little bit on the on the previous one, so. You know, at the pleasure of the group, we can revise this one as needed.
Yeah, I, this doesn't even seem, for me, it doesn't apply to this goal. Scott and Pat, what do you think?
Well, I'm I'm in agreement, but also I'm wondering is. Is would South Boundary Road be a part of this, since there can be no development until the South Boundary Road is. Resolved.
In in this goal, though, I I feel like the primary, if we're looking at the next six months, it's really working on the housing element. That's, I mean, that seems like what the primary.
Yeah, yes, it's working on the housing element, but like to have affordable housing. Fort Or development would be a primary. Area to focus on putting affordable housing, and that is dependent. Any kind of development in the Fort Or, on the Fort Or property is dependent on the. Completion of the of the South Boundary Road, that's where it's kind of a farfetched thing, but it's all contingent on that.
Maybe if it's helpful, we can start on the second goal in there, because it does touch specifically on the housing element.
The second objective?
Yeah, and then maybe we can gain some traction from there, because those are clearly within that objective. The second and third talk specifically about that housing element. Now, the the second objective, which was. Presenting an update on potential sources, grants, cost sharing and so on, and that has already been done. So maybe it takes the next step in that we use those funds, the leap and the reap grants that we've received. Maybe the objective there. Is an update to talk about implementing or utilizing those funds. In order to specifically update that portion of the general plan. Those are my thoughts.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alex, no, go ahead.
All right, yeah, and and then with number two, it seems to me that the leap and the reap. You know, grants came in, but I really think number two needs to, so we need to recycle that one and and keep that one, you know, any general plan amendment. For purposes of environmental review, you want to package as much as you can into it, and you're talking, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a general plan amendment, and. Hopefully, it's done in one fell swoop to sort of make it as clean as possible, housing element, of course, is its own sort of, it's sort of the the satellite to the meat, you know, alone. So I would just suggest kind of keeping, maybe we just reset that goal for the next six months is is to. Ask the city manager to continue to identify grant fund opportunities for general plan update.
I would agree with that, because, yeah, we're we're gonna. There's going to be a lot in going into just dealing with the housing element, and so. So I think, yeah, keeping that at the forefront is important.
And I think perhaps what we could do is in in, so for goal number two, just be rewritten, but instead of twenty twenty, August twenty fifth, just at the August. just at the August 2021 council meeting. I'm not sure what the date is. Kind of keep the same thing, and then the comments, you know, can be for the, for this current goal, but we could have it. Again, maybe that's number four now, is to sort of recycle that goal.
Okay. In, in terms of the housing element, this, this next objective, hold a housing element study session for the city council and planning commission, including consideration of an emergency shelter overlay with public input. I feel like we also need to put in there the ADU ordinance that's also going to be coming up. And so, and I, I think we need to do public outreach in terms of educating the public about the ADU ordinance. So.
Is that, is that a general plan thing? Yeah, I mean, I guess that's tied into the housing element. You know, it's a standalone thing, but certainly it can help, help us meet our Reno numbers.
Right.
Maybe a workshop would be in order.
An ADU workshop?
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe we might want to be careful on the enforcement piece or the municipal code piece. We've got that now as a new goal, that, that will be something we'll be looking at when we talk specifically about that goal. But yeah, I agree with Kim that a lot of that impacts general plan. So it's just a matter, I guess, being able to ensure that portion is part of the general plan, but not necessarily talk specifically about the municipal code.
Right, maybe how it ties into the housing element update. So I think that, that's kind of a Denise Duffy city manager and maybe in, in myself. I think the city council has to hold the, the workshop. But it would seem to me, we could either designate some sub-goals right now, or just put that out there and maybe work with staff to see how and when they wanted to bring that to the public, just adhering on that. What kind of a timestamp are we talking about, the next three months perhaps?
From when I, when I talked to Jeff about the ADU ordinance, it make, he makes it sound like it would be, you know, ready to sort of review or talk about in the next couple of months.
I'm just wondering if, if we have this public workshop, you know, should that come before we start, we go to drafting the ADU ordinance?
Yes, I, I believe so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Get the input.
Because I've got, I've done some of the legal research and I've got a framework going, but it now sounds to me like maybe we ought to get that, that public input and maybe have some sort of workshop, I don't know, in, in, within the month, just for public input, hey, here's the, what the state says we can do, here's what we can do. What, give us your thoughts.
Yeah, I think that would be important. I like that.
So maybe, maybe get council direction, council could give us, we could go to council and say, hey, we'd like to, to put that on. I mean, I suppose we could just call a special meeting, but what we could do for sort of transparency and better, best communication is at the February council meetings, put an informational item on, say, hey, everybody, here's the date of the workshop for this. Here's what, here's the high level, what it'll be, it'll be state regulation, local regulation, and sort of some of our Reno numbers, that type of thing. I think that way we could get sort of the most, most participation out of it.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea, but I, I have a question that, oh, you said informational, that's fine. Because I don't think it's something that the council needs to vote on.
No, I, I agree with you, Pat. I think it's, we get public input and then the staff goes away with that and brings back to council the ADU ordinance.
Does it go to the planning commission first?
Yes, the planning commission needs to recommend that.
Right, okay.
But the direction to go sort of, go do that and hold the, the workshop, I think, needs to come from council. And again, I think if we do that at the regular meeting in February, we get the most visibility for people to participate.
Right, that's a good idea.
Yeah, cross the board. I, I think that's good, Alex.
I'll put at February 2021 council meeting. Meeting and council will do that, and it'll be announce public workshop. Shop regarding ADUs.
The day of that city council meeting is the 23rd.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Council meeting, who? Council will do it, what? Announce public workshop regarding ADUs vis a vis housing, ADU slash housing, or as relates to housing element.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and who is the, the city manager?
The, well, we will, we will let, let the council know that we, the city manager, I think, will host that, that forum, but the announce, this action item to announce it to the world will come from council. It'll be just in, an action item on the February agenda saying, hey, we're putting together a workshop, public workshop on ADUs, come on, come on.
And then who actually does the workshop, Alex?
I think that that would be, it would probably be Jeff, myself, and Denise Duffy.
Okay.
And be, just to answer questions of, again, you know, sort of what's the state law? What, what's the current law? And then Denise Duffy, I think, can provide some, some insight with regard to sort of the planning aspect of that. And, and then there's always the question too of, you know, it's a public workshop, but is it, is it a council meeting as well? Some people, you know, are of the mind that if it's just the city manager and the public, there's an informality that sort of lets people really sort of let loose and, and do that. Other people, you know, think it's better to have a council meeting do that, so the council members can also.
We've had, not at a council meeting, but it's a separate meeting just for the workshop. So those who are really interested in this topic have, feel free to speak their, their opinions and ask appropriate questions.
Yeah, I like the ability to have that back and forth with the public and with those who are presenting. So, and that, and that seems like more of a workshop atmosphere.
Yeah, so not a council meeting, just, just staff and the public. And of course, that'll be a Brown Act meeting, you'll get full minutes from it, you'll get, you know, the video from it, so everyone can be on board with sort of the, the druthers of the public.
I mean, so council could attend, right, but it, but it's not, but it's just called something different.
Right, right, council can always attend.
Yeah, okay.
That's what we've done previously, and the informality seems to encourage people to speak their minds.
I, I agree, it's most effective. I think we're all in agreement on that.
Okay, okay. So that's kind of a new, so I'll put that as number four. Okay.
And so then this number three, hold a housing study, housing element study session for the city council and planning commission. Including consideration of an emergency shelter overlay with public input.
Yeah, so the emergency shelter overlay, I think, is required by state law that, and I'm not sure, we maybe even went and did that I, during the last housing element, but.
Let's see, beginning, I'm looking at the comments, beginning planning work based on receipt of LEAP grant, revising zoning ordinance for public hearing. So then we also need zoning ordinance revised too. So there's, I mean, there's multiple
Yeah.
elements there. Is that, is that one study session where you're going over all of those? I'm not, I'm not familiar enough to know.
I'm not sure either. I think the zoning ordinance was the, you know, that, that's where we would do the shelter overlay. We'd go into the, you know, to municipal code in, in Title 17, I think it is, and just, you know, put in a, an emergency overlay. The housing study session.
I, I know that the mayor has talked about bringing MBEP into, to the council in March and just educating us about the housing element. So, you know, that might be a place to start.
We could leverage that.
Yeah, some educator, and then so that we're all on the same page and then we can move forward. Because I'm going to need some additional education on that, so.
Yeah, housing elements are really, are really the most complicated of all the elements. You know, I think what we can also do too is, is get back to the group and, and well, we could, we could certainly try and fine tune it now, but they may also may have input as to what. You know, and I see it's a revised goal now.
And Alex, maybe you're best to answer it, but the emergency shelter overlay, what specifically was that?
My recollection is that it was, you know, for, for transients and, and, and to address the homelessness problem, emergency shelter overlay was something that's where I'd say, look, in, in all zones or, or maybe certain zones, in order to have a housing, compliant housing element, you need to go and zone that for emergency shelter. Meaning, if your current code says no emergency shelters, you need to go back and fix that as part of the state's push to allow emergency shelters in, in more parts of, of cities.
Okay, yeah, I'm tracking on, on that portion of the housing element. So it had nothing to do with COVID, it was more of that portion of the emergency shelter, okay.
It preceded COVID.
Yeah. I remember talking about it, but not exactly what it meant.
It's more for like the excessive heat in the summertime, if you're, if you ever have that or cold in the winter and so on, to take care of the homelessness. And it not, not necessarily is open 24/7, 365. It's more of a as needed.
Yeah, I mean, it would seem to me, if this is still a goal, it's just kind of, I think what was contemplated was a joint session between the council and the planning commission with, you know, just the housing element. I don't know if it was our state contact that was maybe going to come from HCD and speak to us about that. I think maybe there was a feeling that you know, just a broader education of the housing element and its requirements with state representatives there. Because I think my recollection is we were wanting to do things, we, you know, we caught a lawsuit that prevented us from doing some things. And, and so we just wanted to sort of bring to the public exactly what was required and straight from the horse's mouth, the state to tell us, here's what, here's what you have to do in order to get a, a compliant housing element. And, and both planning commission and city council. And that way, when it came time to move it through the public process, both bodies had a firm understanding of, of the requirements and, and what had to be done.
Yes, I like that idea.
So yeah, and we can keep that, but maybe just revise the date and, and, and just clarify that. You know, I think when, when we go back to the broader group, so maybe we could write, hold a housing element study session for the city council and planning commission, including, yeah? No, I, I think that can stay. It's just a study session. I think maybe that can stay, and we can maybe just explain that a little bit. Yeah, and, and.
Do we have to add in zoning ordinance? Or, or does consideration of the emergency shelter overlay, does that imply?
That's a specific part of the, of the, the housing element, if that's to be updated, might involve some zoning changes. So I think that would be just part of the discussion as, as we were talking about the, the housing element. You know, what portions of the zoning code need to go in and be tweaked in order to, not only for the emergency shelter piece, but, but more broadly, you know, any other zoning changes. Yeah, maybe we could just put including, including zoning ordinance revisions.
Yes.
Revisions and consideration of emergency shelter overlay with public input. How's that? What about a timeframe?
We have the ADU ordinance, what, when, when did we say for that, that we, we're going to announce it in February?
February, and then hopefully in early March, have, have the meeting, and then it'll go to planning commission and then city council. So maybe the beginning of, I don't know, April, May-ish?
Right.
And maybe, yeah, maybe at the same time, we could, in that same timeframe, we could schedule that.
Really, I think maybe May would be better.
Okay.
Yeah, just looking at, at the different meetings that we have, I mean, being realistic with it, May is probably the more appropriate time.
Yeah, and I think she, you know, these three years' goals with sort of six-month objectives. So I think we're still within, within the parameters of what she's looking for.
Yeah.
So the May city council is May 25.
Thank you, May 25, council meeting. Yeah, I mean, it could be, you know, a joint, a, a joint meeting of the two, but, and have it sometime before the May 25th council meeting.
Yeah, and Alex, that piece of that statement, it being a joint meeting, that's something that I was advocating for when we were revising the first housing element. I think that's critical, so that's a great point that, you know, to emphasize that it should be city council and planning commission.
Okay, and I, why don't I, on that, on the what piece, say with public input, comma, and state representation? That way we can invite HCD, if it's far enough out, to either zoom in, 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 and answer some of those questions. I think we were working with Robyn, I can't remember her last name, just a fabulous, fabulous person up at HCD, and, you know, I think she was even on some of our calls and meetings, and if she could be there to answer questions, I think it would really help, help us out, so with state representative present.
Right, in addition to that, Alex, we might want to have an Ambag representative as well, because they're the ones that send out the regional numbers for us. So, I mean, just invite them, I might be something that they would want to attend, so that they kind of give their methodology on how they took the state numbers and then divvied that out at a regional level. And, you know, once again, the methodology is always a sticking point on that, where, you know, cities and then citizens within the city will say, hey, why are we being required to do this?
Especially Commissioner Burton, who was really had an issue with.
Absolutely. And, you know, it's the rationale behind it is not only always changing, but it's sometimes hard to understand. And having the experts there will be helpful, I think.
Okay.
I, I will also advocate for MBEP to be there, Monterey Bay Economic Partnerships. And they have a housing 201 session that they do to educate people on the housing element. So they've just got a lot of experience with that, so I would, I, I would like to put that in there.
And they're a nonprofit, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good, so we'll add those state representative, or I should say HCD representative. You should see these notes, I'll be lucky if I can read them. HCD, Ambag, and MBEP representatives present. And of course, Denise Duffy, probably Erin Army, okay. Okay, so goal one, present city council status and consolidation, background materials for developers, move to the next goal, we think. You know, I wonder too, if this begs the question, or, or where the appropriate place would be to do this? I know that there has been question regarding the Fort Or parcel, the option parcel, and what's to be done out there. And, you know, I think that, that you folks as a council need to sort of think about that, and, and that'll be, whatever the general plan is, and any amendments there too, should accommodate that. So it would seem that starting to coalesce around a strategy for that, that, that parcel, you know, would be important. I, of course, in your, as Marilyn is your servant, as so am I, you know, you tell me what you want to do and I'll get it done for you. But what I need is the strategy to then start thinking about, you know, tinkering with the general plan to make that happen.
But what I'd like to see, I mean, our general plan hasn't been updated for the land use portion since 97, it's old. And if we look at the table that's there that represents that, that part that was annexed, I, I feel like we need to go out to the public to see if that's still their vision. So, you know, maybe that falls into the next, the next goal as far as developed city-owned properties.
Yeah, okay.
You have five minutes left, and if the recorder wants, you can go ahead and send right there in the chat to Gail your objectives, because you're not in a separate breakout room.
Oh, boy.
I'll let you know when we've got a minute left.
I'm going to start typing while we talk here, bye.
Scott and Pat, while Alex is typing, do you have any thoughts on that in terms of the general plan update?
Yeah, so I think we're kind of stepping into the next goal. In terms of, you know, if you're looking specifically at the development of four-door property. That kind of goes into that next goal, but if you're looking. You know, at the, simply the update of the city's general plan. I mean, being realistic, it's very ambitious to. Look at updating the housing element, which we're going to have to do here pretty soon again. We'll get our numbers, I think, around the September timeframe. And so we're going to go through that whole situation again, that whole process again. And if you were either part of it or track it, it's pretty involved. And the reason why the general plan hasn't been updated in that long, for that long is it, it's. Very, very. Time consuming and. Well, resource consuming, money and time and everything else. So maybe. A specific portion of the general plan. We could look at, but updating.
Alex, the chat just needs to go to Gail. It doesn't need to go to everybody. You're doing a good job, though.
I'm sorry, Scott, say that, your last part again.
Yeah, so the complete, you know, putting it down as a. A specific, you know, an objective during this, this timeframe. Realizing that we gotta update our housing element. I mean, it would be very ambitious. And I guess we could put it, I mean, it's a three-year goal. But maybe specifically addressing some of the things that will be considered. As part of the actual development of the four-door, maybe we can take a look at that, kind of pick that piece out of there. But yeah, it's, I think what we have to do is, is be realistic. When we look at all those things that need to happen.
Yeah, I mean, when we look at data, the general plan, I mean, you know, we're in, within the safety element, we're supposed to be talking about climate change. And there's, you know, there's no way that that's not even, that's not even mentioned in the safety portion of our general plan. So we are definitely behind the times, but I would agree that we need to focus on the housing element first. But I'd say before we move forward with any thoughts of development, I think we need to do that. Public input, which again goes into that next goal. With the idea that, of, of asking, because I think we do need to have an updated general plan. That accurately reflects the values and the vision of our residents before we move forward.
I, I think we're going to have to get some grant money in order to do any of the.
Everyone is going to be joining you all in about 45 seconds. And Alex, just go ahead and send the, the record. I didn't listen in on you. I could see you because you're on the biggest screen. Think about which goal you want to work to next. We are not going to work on, we're going to work on enhance the city's effectiveness as a total group. So the next two will be the city-owned properties goal. And also the goal. On.
The municipal code?
Do you want us to, uh, do things in chat or? Add?
Welcome back. Who was the recorder for the housing group? Thank you, Allison.
That, that was Alex, and I want to thank Alex for doing that. It was Alex.
The recorder?
Alex.
The housing group?
It was me, Marilyn, and I'm, I'm, I'm still typing away here, so I'll get you, I'll get this to Gabby.
Alex had.
You know, Alex was for fiscal.
Alex had a lot of good ideas and input.
And the general plan, housing element.
Alex was our recorder in the general plan, housing element.
Allison, who was that on the housing? Or you, you were in fiscal, though.
Allison, Allison was the fiscal.
For some reason, I'm not hearing you. I don't know why.
You're not hearing who, me?
I'm not hearing.
Kim, can you say something?
Yeah, I can hear you, Allison. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now I can. Yes.
So I, I, I am the recorder for the fiscal.
Okay.
And Alex was the recorder for the housing or the general plan, housing element.
Okay, yes, that's right. All right, and so have you turned in your objectives then for fiscal?
So I'm asking you how you'd like those.
Those go in the chat?
Okay.
And you just list them, one, two, three, you know, numerical order according to chronology. And be sure when, who, what. All right, what we're going to do is we're going to go next to the next two goals, because Gail needs to be writing in the objectives. So she'll be writing the, in the objectives that you selected. While you're working for the next set of goals. And the la, the, the last goal of the day we'll be doing as a total group, that's enhance the city's effectiveness and efficiency. That makes sense? So we have the city-owned properties. And. The one on review and revise. Let's see, scale here yet. Gail?
Yes.
Oh, good. Can you give me the wording of the, of the, of the last, the new goal? I don't have it up here.
On the chat, review and revise the municipal code.
Municipal code. And you have, you're getting the objectives from both Alex and Allison?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and assign them according to what they want to do. So again, let me put this up here on the breakout sessions. And we'll do the same thing in terms of the rooms. I'm going to recreate two rooms. And we'll manually do that. Okay, and the one that we're going to do is. Properties is the name of it. And the next one. Will be municipal code. So decide what you would like. We'll do exactly the same thing as we did the last time. I'm going to ask you to say. If you're involved, want to be involved in properties, I need two council members, two or three, no, two, two. We're going to have you do it just in a separate group. So who?
This is Pat, and I would like to be on the developed city-owned properties.
Okay, and you too, Kim?
Sure.
I think everybody's gonna want to be involved.
That's a big one.
You're going to, you're going to all have a chance to look at these.
Marilyn, could we, could I suggest that perhaps this is our last one where all of us participate?
Yeah, I'll see that one.
We have two others that we can divvy up? And if we do the development at the end?
That's a great idea.
My concern is, the, the concern is that you have 10 objectives from last time. Which is way too many, and that really takes a lot of time to go, even just go through those 10.
Marilyn, I think, I think now Marilyn, at this point in our city's.
Yeah, that's okay. It's your meeting. It's not mine.
I, I would, as, as the city manager, I would appreciate that we have the entire council or the.
Yeah, that's fine.
On that one, that's so important that it's, it's worth the, the hassle of having 10. So I would, I would request that we please do that.
Okay, then. All right. Okay, then I think what I'm going to do is I think I'm going to do that now. Because you're going to need more energy for that one. And so let's see, did, has Chris had to leave? Does anybody know? There we are. Great, Chris, we know you're busy and really so glad that you were able to be with us, even though it's, it's limited time. Okay, so everybody then, what we decide, the group decided, Chris, is go to develop city-owned properties sustain, sustainably. With public input. And let me just guide you through this. Would you please just read the first page silently to yourself? And then I'm going to facilitate this to get you through this one. So just read that page, page D, like David. Does anybody need more time to read those? Remember, I'm the type A plus, so I got you big faster, so slow me down.
I know you're concerned about the 10 of these, but these, I mean, a lot of these, just reading through this, we're going to actually go through. I mean, some of these actually are resolved already.
No, no, I realize that. I, I'm fine with it. You know, this is not my meeting. It's your meeting. If you all want to do it together, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you through this. Okay.
I'm going to eliminate the first five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to ask that first, but would you, would you first please look on page E? Because that's, there's three more objectives there.
Right.
I just want you to, I have them all in mind. I've read them all.
On the fifth one, Mayor, I mean, we're not done with that, but I would agree that it's not, I mean, it's, it's on track.
Okay, but let's, let's just finish reading the other one and then I'll take, I'm going to take you to, I was going to ask you about the first four. Since they're done, is there anything that needs to be done? Then I'll move to the fifth one. And remember, I've got to get this, that the whole group is, is agreeing on this. Is everybody finished reading the, the page E?
Yeah.
Okay, would you agree that since the first four were done, there's nothing further that needs to be done with those and we can take those off? Because see, what Gail is going to do is as soon as she's typed the, the, and one of the reasons we were doing it that way. She's going to finish typing the others and then she'll just go through this. Okay, so it's been suggested that presented the city council for action and amended agreement with California native plants. Now, you already talked about native plants. Does that need to stay as an objective?
Yes.
Number four, five, I need.
It, it needs to stay as an objective, but it's, I would say its status is.
Okay, the date needs to be changed. Because June 23rd is already passed, so.
Alex, 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 do you have any, can he hear me?
We, we have a, we have a, we just had a second mediation date for the end of this month. You know, we're not going to, you know, we can only control half of this litigation, so we don't, we can't necessarily say when it's going to be done. But at the, at the March council meeting, we could, we could present an update. I mean, I, you know, just sort of saying here, present an amended agreement, you know, it takes two to tango. I can't, I can't. I can't, it's, it's hard to put a date on that.
Sure, okay, Alex, would you think that by, by June, by July 15th, this would have happened?
Can we say for the future?
Yeah, you could usually, after the six months. So, so, you know, when the public reads this, they think, well, wait a minute, this was, so you, is there a timeline that you think? Do you think July 15th, six months from now is any possibility?
I think it's a possibility. It's not a guarantee, but certainly we can revise this to sort of.
I would recommend from a, a process standpoint.
Yeah, and to John's point, I would, I would consider this one on target, you know, we've, we've had.
Yeah, well, you're not going to mark those, you're not going to be marking those right now.
And negotiate, right.
You don't, that's the monthly updates, so you can ignore. Gail will just be giving you the, the when, who, what, and then status will be blank and so will comments. Because this is now, will be comments and status from now forward. Okay, so, so it's, we'll save then by. July 15th.
Take that a city council date?
And you could do, you could say it's city council date if you want to, or you could just say July 15th and make that specific later. What do the rest of you think? Is it okay just to say July 15th at this point?
I think, wait, do you know how it before, was it he, he had these as milestones for his, for him to report to us? That's what they were in there for.
So I actually like the city council dates because.
Okay, that's usually what we do.
Not only us, but also the public are aware.
I, I, you know, I think that does work better. Okay, I'm trying to be input on process and stay out of your content. Okay, when would the, when would the, the first meeting in July be? When, when would your July meeting be? I can't remember the date.
The fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday.
And I don't know, do we meet in July and not August, or the other way around?
We don't meet in July, I thought.
Yeah.
All right, then, then when is, when is the, when is the June?
I think that's why, I think that's why this was the June. This was the last one in June.
Yeah, but this is 2020, 2020, so for 2021, we need to change it to the, at the June, and that would be the fourth Thursday, Wednesday? Tuesday, yeah, see, I, every group I'm with is different. So by June 22nd of 2021 would be the date. As, as a holder, and for those of you that haven't been with us before, each month it gets reviewed and sometimes the date gets revised. I mean, you may get it done sooner, or you may end up saying, that's going to have to be future. It's not even going to follow in this six months. Okay, so we'll put down, would somebody please do the recording on this to give to Gail? Recording the dates. So that would be. June 22nd. 2021. Who, who'd be willing to do that? Or Gail, are you available?
Yeah, I'm following along with you.
Oh, okay, I thought you were still writing the objectives for the two other goals.
Yeah, but this, it's probably easier if I follow along with you.
Okay, then just go ahead. So. At the June 22nd, 2021 is, is number four, Gail.
It's by June 22nd or at the?
Or at, tentatively at.
Okay, that's 23rd then. Right, is it, at the 22nd is a council?
The 22nd is a Tuesday.
Okay.
So it is at the.
Council meeting.
At the June 22nd council meeting. Got it. Okay, let's look at the next one. And that was.
Marilyn, if I may, with councils. Humoring me, if we look at number four, the one before the one we just did, that was a joint powers authority agreement for habitat conference conservation plan. We actually have a place filler for that that I'd like to get on there, and it's actually the habitat management plan. That I, I would, I would love to put that on there for March.
Now, is this a new, is this a new objective? Okay, could we, could we go through the, these?
Okay, absolutely. It just covers that exact topic, so I figured it was timely to get.
Okay, then let, let's just finish, it's number five, Gail. That is at the June 22nd, 2021 city council meeting. And then, and then you're talking about number four. It's related, so how, what's the how? Let's not do the who and the date yet. What's the how? How would it be stated?
Present a proposal for a habitat management plan.
And propose, sent the proposal to the city council?
Yes.
Jeff, I would suggest giving yourself an extra month.
Well, it's, it's all done, Mayor. It's ready to go.
Okay.
Been working on it.
You should tell, in that case, you should tell him it should be March. I'm kidding you.
February.
Yeah. Okay, that's a little bit too quick.
Okay, Gail, do you have that down?
I present to the city council a proposal for a habitat management plan.
That works for you?
Yep.
Me, yeah, okay, and then what date are you suggesting?
It would be the March 23rd council meeting.
Okay, I, I wasn't making such a good joke after all, was I, when I said March?
No.
Okay, so at the March 23rd.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I just wanted to get that out there and get it kind of.
No, that's fine.
Can, can we clarify habitat management plan for four-door property? Just if, if any of the public is reading this, they're going to think we're looking at all of our habitats.
Right, right.
Okay, good idea for four-door.
And I need a who on this.
Yes, now we're ready for the who, now that we have the date.
It'll be a staff presentation.
So, but, but who, is it you that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be.
It should say city manager.
Okay. Okay.
City manager.
Is there any reason to include Alex on this as it was in the previous objective?
Yeah, does that work? Is that, you always have who's the lead and then you have anybody else. Alex, does that seem appropriate?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, so at the March 23rd city council meeting, the city manager working with the city attorney will present to the city council a habitat management plan for Fort Ord, Fort Ord? Okay, let's look at the next one, which says, present to the city council for action and amended agreement with California Native Plant Society.
We just, we just don't.
That's the one we did.
That's the one we did.
Okay. Okay, look at the sixth one. At the June 23rd, we'll forget the meeting, the date. Ensure that the owner of Delray Parks, Delray Oaks Gardens is compliant with their conditional use permit and lease. Now, he was scheduled for the November Planning Commission. Uh, what's the outcome of this?
Remain. It needs to remain.
But let's have a date then. We all agree that it needs to remain?
Right, it does, it does, but there's a new.
Looking at all of you. This, this belongs.
Right, there, there's just, there's a new timeline, and I don't know what that is. Alex, do you, do we have a new timeline on that, or?
Why don't we ask, why don't we ask Jeff for a minute here?
Uh, this is gonna be a team effort with Alex and I.
Yeah.
So the two of you make a recommendation as a date?
Yeah. What, go back and give me the specific action.
Ensure that the owner of Delray Oaks Gardens is compliant with their conditional use permit and lease.
Yesterday.
Thank you, Alex. That's pretty new.
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff and I, and perhaps others are, are meeting this Friday. Jeff, I think we could have, you know, this is now a priority for the council and for the city. So I think later this month, we could have a status update for the council. I know this is, this is kind of priority one for us. As far as forcing compliance, if only I had that power, but I think I'm, you know, giving an update or substantial steps towards. I think, you know, we could do that by the end of this, by, by the February regular meeting.
So you would rather not put a date in terms of actual compliance?
Well, again, we, we can't force people to comply. We can, we can go all out in our efforts, but we can lead the horse to water, if you will.
So it's going to be update, we'll update the city council regarding the.
Yeah, on actions taken to ensure compliance with CUP and lease agreement.
Okay.
We want it in February or March, Alex, just to.
Well, I mean, I think we can give you guys an update in February. Like I said, it's gonna be, it's priority one for, for staff, at least. You know, that's my understanding, so we can hopefully have a solid.
Is that February 23rd then? At the February 23rd city council meeting?
Yeah, the regular council meeting.
Okay, so at the February 23rd city council meeting.
Yeah.
And, and then Gail needs to type this. So Alex, can you say this how it's supposed to be worded?
I believe I have it.
Oh, why don't you read it?
I will read it to you. At that meeting, the city manager working with the city attorney will update the city council on actions taken to ensure that the owner of Delray Oaks Gardens is compliant with their conditional use permit and lease.
Yeah, that work?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, I'm gonna move you on, and you got the date, right? The date's February.
Yeah, February 23rd.
Okay, number, that's one, that's number seven, said previously, present to the city council the status of water allocation for the former RV storage lot. And it said, stat was preparing to present to the planning commission for public discussion in the first part of 2021. When do you expect that you could present the status?
Marilyn, I'm very, very sorry. I feel like I need to go back to number, the previous one, just to clarify. So, again, we are stating that there's gonna be a status update at the end of February, and then that's it. It seems like that we could check that as being done. Do we, do we also need to say that that will continue to, to ensure that he will, or how, how do we? I don't know, it just seems like the way we worded it, we can check it as being done, and I want to make sure we.
Use some language, you know, until, until full compliance is attained, comma, you know, city manager, city attorney shall present to council updates regarding blah, blah, blah. And that way, it's kind of a, puts on us honors to have an ongoing, ongoing task there.
Okay, hold off just a minute, hold off just a minute. So what you're suggesting, Alex, that goes in the time column, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good, good idea. We don't want to just give one update and be done with it. We, I think, you know, the, the whole point is we want compliance, and until we get that, we should be giving regular updates.
Okay, so, Gail, did you catch what he said? Just a minute, John, I want to make sure we get this.
So it should probably read, beginning with the February 23rd council meeting and periodically, monthly.
What do you say?
Regularly thereafter.
You can say at least monthly? Does that help?
I think that's good, until we get compliance, yeah.
Yeah, because then, remember, the owner reads this, and he realizes, uh-oh, they're coming back every month. This is, this is gonna keep coming. Okay, so Gail, do you want to say, read it how it sounds and see?
Beginning with the February 23rd. Oh, beginning with the February 23rd city council meeting and monthly thereafter.
Go ahead.
The city manager working with the city attorney will update the city council on the actions taken to ensure that the owner of Delray Oaks Gardens is compliant with their conditional use permit and lease.
Good. Okay, John?
It's kind of, it, it kind of dovetails on, on what Kim was saying, is that, is it, is the language in the actual task fully, you know, cover off of everything? Is that, I mean, our, our goal is, is compliance with the, is compliance with the CP and compliance with the lease, but one of the options may be that, you know, the, the vendor, the, the lease CE may just say no, right? So, so one, one of the options could be that they just, they just walk it. At that point, the whole thing is, is kind of, actually, no, then that opens up a whole nother set of actions that need to be taken.
Alex.
That'd be a status update?
Let's let Alex answer this first. Alex?
John, so if I understand you, it's sort of like, are you saying if, if we push for compliance and the less C decides to walk away, this goes away?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think.
You can't control it.
Yeah, maybe we should have some language in there. Sorry, Gail. You know, compliance to CUP and, and lease provisions. I'm just trying to think of the language.
It changes, it changes the task if they walk, right?
It changes the task if they walk, but, but I think under the lease agreement, the city would probably have the ability to seek damages in, in order to return the property to the way it was supposed to be managed. So does that cover your concern?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I just want the task to be explicit to what it is that we're, that we're wanting to accomplish. We, we, the goal, I mean, I think, is, is we love to get compliance with the lease, but that doesn't necessarily, but just like you said, we don't know what we don't know, and we can't predict the future. So, and, and if it, and if, if the LECE walks, then we're, we're, this becomes a different task at that point.
Yeah, and if the LECE walks, remember you're updating the goals and objectives every month. And if the LECE walks, then you're changing the outcome of the objective.
Yeah.
But right now, you're saying, we're serious about this, and we're gonna have an update on it publicly every month.
Right.
Okay.
So I think you're covering yourself. I need to move you on.
And the update would include any kind of, you know, shift in, in that relationship as well.
Okay, I think, I think you've got yourself covered in terms of, we're not giving up on this just because we're not going back to ensuring, because the fact of the matter is, you can't ensure compliance. Okay, let's look at the seventh one. We, I started on that. Present to the city council the status of water allocation for the former RV storage lot. Jeff, what's, what's the status of this in terms of, of a date?
Let's do it. I, I think we have a lot of data on the water allocation, but I just don't know if the, the planning commission is, is the proper status to, to make a presentation. I don't know if we need this as an objective right now, or a, yeah, as, as an objective right now, until we decide to do something or to look further into doing something with that lot.
What you could do is to incorporate, is you could say, the city manager with input from the planning commission, and then say, present. So you're still the one that's in the, in the driver's seat for presenting.
I, I, I just don't, I'm not sure the context with which this one was written. I think it was at a time when we were looking at doing something down there. At this point, we're not.
Yeah, so we're just taking off. It's okay.
I, I, that's, that would be my suggestion.
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna ask if this, if this was still pertinent, because I think that this actually pinned on three. And three is now checked off, as I, as I remember it.
Then would you agree, group? Let's just take this one on.
But actually.
You want it for future consideration?
Number three has to do with four-door.
Exactly.
And this one has to do with.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm totally, no, I'm just thinking that, okay, no, no, I was thinking the RV, the RV park.
Yeah, you're talking about the airport.
Okay.
I think it's actually, um, you know, whatever water is there is not necessarily only for that piece of property. It could be used for other, you know, we have businesses that want to expand or other kinds of things. Additionally, I would like to see, I would like to understand the status of the Water at Work Memorial.
I agree with you, Allison.
It's kind of more the, for me, it's understanding the status of any.
Water allocation.
Water allocations within.
Okay, let's get some feedback from Jeff. Jeff, there seems to be a lot of.
I think that makes a lot more sense than just the planning commission giving a.
Okay, then.
Presenting something to the planning commission about water down there.
Yeah, and the planning portion is just in a comment column, so it's.
Right.
So how would you want to, how would you want to do it? How would you want to?
That, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having an objective that we present a status on the city's water resources, period. I think would be a smarter objective. It's an overall view, and it will apply and trickle down to smaller projects or things that may come up.
Would the rest of you be, and, and I want to make.
Absolutely, yeah. Jeff's spot on to, to be able to do an all-encompassing, where do we stand on water?
Okay, let me ask.
That takes into account what Allison is saying with, you know, not only the RV area, but also down in Work Memorial Park. So, yeah, I think that's a good way to approach it.
Okay, let's see, let's make sure that everybody's comfortable with this, because if, if you're done with this one, we don't need to spend more time on it.
Kim has her hand up.
I know she does. Just a minute, I, I'm gonna get to you. Just so you know, it's presented to the city council, the city's water resource, and you said allocation? Is that what you said, or just resources availability? Gail, what did you write?
He said resource.
You did.
Sorry. Present an overview of the city's water resources and allocation.
Okay.
To the city.
An overview of the city's water resources. See, before, I was getting more questions, I wanted him to get clear to us as to how he was suggesting it. Now, Kim, I wasn't ignoring you.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. I'm just throwing in another little wrench into it. If we're gonna look at the RV storage park, I think we also need to look at the deed, if there's, see if there's any deed restrictions on that portion.
You're not, you've taken out the RV park.
Right, I know. So maybe, maybe, maybe it's a, it's another objective than if we're looking.
Yeah, and just, one of the things you've got to remember is you've got a really small staff. So you want to be sure, that, that's why I always go back to Jeff and say, okay, Jeff, now, how, how does this work? What you can do, if something is critical and you all agree to it, you can put it on for future, and that means it's a placeholder. So, you know, if something comes up that's that important, but on the other hand, what we want to do is, at this point, he has suggested the water resource and allocation. Does that make sense to all of you, an update? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then, let's look at the next page, which was.
I need a date, I need a date, please.
Oh, the date, I'm sorry. What, Jeff, that's up to you. What do you think? What date of, what city council meeting would be appropriate that, that fits in with your work schedule here to present the water resource and allocation? I mean, give me a month and we'll help you with it.
I would probably say April, at the earliest, April or May.
Okay, then.
Put it out to May, that way.
Yeah, and the May date, is it always the fourth Tuesday, or is there two dates?
Always the fourth Tuesday.
Okay, so that's May, that's May 25th. And remember, it, it gets reviewed each time, and if he's got it together before for April, then it gets shifted. Okay, all right, let's look at the next page, which is page E. And that is, present an exclusive negotiating agreement for the former four-door property with developers for city council consideration. And this, on hold due to COVID, is this, does this become, is this still important, but it becomes future? Because you don't know when COVID's gonna be resolved? Jeff, what's your, what's your input on this?
This crosses over to financial or ensuring fiscal stability. We, we won't have an ENA for any consideration, because we've stopped that process. I, I would just, if we can mirror, and I don't know if this, you know, what the mayor thinks, or, or if this is appropriate, but we have one for fiscal stability, where we will be presenting an update on the, I, I think a smarter thing is an update on the, on, on the development process. Just an overview of the development.
Should we just take this one off then, from your recommendation, Jeff?
Yeah, or, or just, Mayor, when did we say we were gonna do that other one? Because that kind of.
Which other one?
The overview of the development process for the, with an.
Economic April.
April. I, I don't know if we can kill two birds with one stone, since this is on here, and that actually addresses that as well.
Okay, so you'd say at the April, and you'd say at the April.
So Marilyn, we already. Marilyn, we already have this as a, an objective under the fiscal stability.
Okay, then we can take this one off.
Yeah.
I think so.
But at least the rest of the council knows it's on there, and they'll be getting an update on that.
Okay, the, the next one.
So we're, so we're moving.
Can I, can I just try me one thing? I, I don't want to lose the focus. I mean, maybe, like you said, we could kick it to future, but I don't want to lose the focus on whatever comes out of, of the tactical work that Jeff's coming, the, the next step is getting, is starting to open up. He's getting to an ENA. Ultimately, we want to get to an ENA, but that's, that's a longer term kind of goal.
Then I'd suggest make it a future.
And I would.
It doesn't have a date then. Go ahead.
It doesn't.
Kim?
I, I would argue that we need to do a lot of public input before we get to the ENA. And so, this is like, this seems way in the future for me.
Okay, so we'll put, it will put future, that means you don't put a date. And if you wish, you can put city manager with public input as a who. Is that okay?
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that works, and, and we'll talk about that on the financial.
And then that'll be, then that, that'll be stated. The rest of the words will be as they are on the record. The number nine was an update on spring 2020 and spring 21 street projects. That's already been done. Unless there's some issue, I'm going to the next one. This one was future. It was a placeholder, and they had thought that it might even be able to be seen, because we would have had another retreat by then. Present to the city council for action, community facilities, district and development impact fees for all city-owned properties because of COVID. What do you want to do with this one?
I think this gets, this gets added to Jeff's overall kind of management. This is a funding, a funding mechanism. And I think to Jeff's tactical work, that's, that's gonna be some of the out, the outcome. Is like, this is how you're gonna generate the income, while you're gonna have a CFD, or you're gonna have a, a tax district.
Okay, so then we take that one off?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, now, now, Gail, how many?
That a future item as well. It seems to me that the more clarity that we provide on the various processes involved in this, the better, right? You know, so even if we have, you know, five for the future, right? Then, especially for the public, as they understand what's coming up and what is involved. I like the idea of, and Marilyn, you know, if there's a negative to having too many future items.
No, there's not. No, that's not. It, it just says, it's a placeholder. It's, it's not that you've got. Your, your staff is not put in a position of having to work on it. Would the rest of you like to just put that as future and not put a date?
Yeah, okay, yes.
And then just say, city manager, present to the city council for action, community facilities, district and development impact fees for all city-owned properties. Is that all right? I'm reading those all over again, because remember, we still have a public member with us that's not seeing this and writing. Okay, now, I would suggest in, in light of that, that, that would be enough objectives on this, on this particular goal. Gail, in terms of, were you able to get in the objectives for the first two goals?
Yes, I have the one for the housing element ready.
Okay, then let's go to that one, because what we need to do is we need to get some of these already to see if there's consensus. What do you have right now? What do you have right now, except for this one? Fortunately, having done it together, which was really a good idea, having done it all together, then you've already got consensus on all these, but we don't have consensus because you had small groups on the other. So let's flip the screen to the housing, uh, goal. And I'm going to ask you five questions. This is what I always do. I'm going to ask you five questions of, on each objective. The first question, is it clear? Because if it isn't clear, uh, how do you know if you agree with it? And, and we want to avoid wordsmithing, we just want a clarity. Is it clear? Is it relevant? In other word, and we're not going to do fiscal stability, Gail, we're going to go ahead and do the.
I know, but while you're talking, I'm going to work on it.
Okay, is it clear? Is it relevant? That, does it relate to the goal? Is there a relationship? And then if the answer is yes, then is it measurable? Will you be able to tell that it's happened? Is the person or people the right ones to be doing it? And your name may be there and you weren't even in the group, and you go, whoa, 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 wait a minute, you, you get to ask. Um, the danger is what I just see on this other one is city manager, city manager, city manager. It usually is not such a problem because the city manager usually has lots of people to delegate to, you know, and I've worked with bigger groups, but we've got to look at the reality there. Is it clear? Is it relevant? Is it measurable? Is it the right person or people? And is the timeframe realistic? So whoever's name is in there has a right to say the time. And my, my caution to you is, is, and I think you've been really good about that on this last one, even though I know I'm evaluating you, in that you were, you were listening to Alex and you were listening to Jeff in terms of of the timeframe, because it's easy to want it, oh, let's get it done right now, but you have to take into consideration the staffing that you've got to do it. So is it clear? Is it relevant? Is it measurable? Is it the right person or people? Is the timeframe realistic? So what we're going to do now is go through this goal and update that, where I am, is update the city's general plan, beginning with the housing element by the February, and, um, it's a city council meeting. So, um, we, we can put that in, uh, that would be the twenty third. The city council with the mayor as the lead will announce a public workshop regarding accessory dwelling units as they relate to the housing element. Do you understand what this means? Is this clear? That's the first question. Group?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, my only question would be, are we just announcing or are we conducting?
Not by the end of February.
Well, you know what? Um, these are, these are major outcomes, so you probably would want to say conduct, and you could still announce it in February, that it was coming. When, by when would you want to hold it? Because announce is, is softer, it's almost more tactical than, than really strategic. How, how soon would you hope to have it?
I, I'm fine to announce it in February.
It doesn't have to be in February though, Allison. You can announce in February that it's coming. What is suggested is that, when is it going to happen? So what?
So I have something in line for, uh, March. It's not only ADU, it's housing in general, but that, it could be in March.
Okay, so by March, what, by what, by, by the March, um.
Can we, can we say by April? That way.
Yeah, give yourself more time.
Manager on agendas.
So.
And, and that we're not overloaded.
Now, is the city council going to be the one to hold this public workshop?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, and so.
I think we thought that it would just be an open public workshop that would be led by, um, city manager, Alex, maybe, um, Denise Duffy, that, that it wouldn't necessarily be led by the council. But it would be just open, it would be open to the public for them to exchange their ideas.
So then just put a date in, maybe by April first or April fifteenth? And then you'd say the who that you just mentioned, Kim. The city manager.
City manager, Alex, and, uh, Denise Duffy. So DDNA.
Now, um, we're trying to get people that are in the, in this group here. So.
So city manager.
Manager.
Alex.
Yeah.
And the city attorney.
Attorney, yeah.
Will hold a pub, a public workshop regarding accessory dwelling units as they relate to the housing unit element. Does that make sense, everybody?
So this is a different meeting than a council meeting.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure, I understand your intention. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, everybody okay with that? Clear now?
Yes.
Relevant, yes or no?
If, if.
Measurable?
Yeah.
And the timeframe, and you don't need to say city council meeting, just by, by April fifteenth.
Can, can we just put the end of April so we can just bookmark it?
Then put May first. We're trying to be consistent on the first of the month or the fifteenth of the month. Unless the date's already selected, so we can put May first. That's fine. Okay, by the May twenty.
Marilyn, Marilyn, the caveat is if that's okay with council and the folks who came up.
Yeah, I can't see you. I don't even know who's talking.
This is Jeff.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I should be able to.
Want to make sure the council's okay with that, where we get it sometime in April, because it's, you know, I want to make sure what they were planning.
Yeah, I thought, I, I thought I cleared that with everybody. Nobody, I, I, like I say, Zoom drives me crazy that I can't see all of you because a lot of you speak nonverbally, which is great. You know, you nod your head or whatever. Okay, uh, by, now this would be at, rather than by, at the May twenty third, twenty twenty one city council meeting, the city council with the mayors on the lead, and I don't know whether announce a hu- housing element study session. Okay, this is, this is the same sort of thing, is holding a, 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 a housing element study session regarding the housing, housing element update, which shall include the city council, planning commission, representative, representative from HCD, AMBAG, and MBEP. And, and then you don't, th- this detail here is not what would need to be in an objective. Unless you decided that for some reason you wanted that to be up here, because this is, this is dictating to this group. So the housing element, it's including, I tell you what you need to do. You, you need to take out the study session and include and say to consider zoning ordinance revision and consideration of emergency shelter overlay. Do you see the difference? This is saying, the session, this is saying who's going to be there, and this says to consider a zoning ordinance revision and, and, and and, and emergency shelter overlay. Is that what you intended, group? Is that okay? Alex, I can see you nod your head.
Yeah, I think that's, I'll, I'll let others speak, but that was my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, because what you want to do is, is the session, but you want to say not, not as much there as to who's there, but you're going to put this over here.
I see.
The who goes in that column, and who would be the lead on this?
Well, it, it, the thought was a joint session of the city council and the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
To consider housing element, and then we thought it would be beneficial to have representatives from HCD, AMBAG, and MBEP there.
Okay, so why don't we say, hold a joint city council, planning commission, housing element study session?
There you go.
Okay, and then, uh.
And again, this is a standalone meeting, correct? Is that, was that?
The way it's written, yes.
Okay.
That was our intention, yeah.
Yeah. Now, let's see, which will include the city council, we've already got the city council, we've already got the planning commission. Then I guess then up here. Uh, why don't we say?
By June one.
By, does that, does that say, we don't have the right who here. Who's in charge of holding the city council? Who, who's putting together this session? Alex, are you involved in this?
I, I think so. I mean, I think it would be city manager led, but, you know, the point of it is to inform all the elected and appointed officials and the public.
Yeah.
Sort of a, an in-service on what is the housing, uh, element update or, and, and, um, you know, provide direction perhaps, or maybe informational, I'm not, I'm not quite sure, but it would seem to me that the city manager would sort of be the, the emcee of the evening on that.
Okay, so the city manager, and then would we say with, with input, uh, from HCD, uh, AMBAG, and MPP?
Yes, input slash presentation from.
Yeah, and we didn't, wouldn't have to put presentation, that, that, that is, input can be however it is, with input from HCD, AMAG, and, okay, and this, this you're saying by what date did you suggest, Alex, since you were in that group?
I, let me go back to my notes, but I'm.
And Jeff, you give input too.
Jeff gives input, I would think, right. So let's see, we.
You want to kind of spread these out so everything's not happening at the same time.
Yeah.
Maybe July one, by July one.
Yeah, that, that's perfect. We had said that the May council meeting is only a few days difference, so.
Good, okay. By July first, the city manager with input from HCD, AMBAG, and MBPEP will hold a joint city council, planning commission, housing element study session regarding the housing element update. There's some, dramatically, there's something wrong here. Housing elements to update, why don't we say, instead of regarding the update, to update the housing element and consider a zoning ordinance revision and emergency shelter overlay.
Well, no, we're not, and I don't think that works because the housing element update is a thing that we, we.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I was just trying to figure out that, because it said housing update, and I thought, and I wondered why you were updating again. Okay, so is it a housing study session to consider a zoning ordinance revision and an emergency shelter and take out the housing element?
Can you do to include a zoning ordinance revision? Because I think we're having a housing.
Yeah, yeah. It's good, because consider means you almost like voting. So to include.
Yeah, if, Marilyn, if I could, this is Scott. So.
Sure, go ahead.
Really what we wanted to do here was to provide an overview. I, I think, and Kim and, 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 um, who else was with Alex and Pat? Um, I think it was, the intent was to provide the overview, which was kind of including the RENA numbers and the zoning and the emergency shelter overlay.
So then, then here it'd be the, regarding the housing element.
To provide overview, I, I think that's what it was.
Maybe instead of regarding, it's providing, yeah, then what it is, is provide, providing an overview of the housing element including a zoning ordinance revision and an emergency shelter overlay.
Yeah, and also what we talked about was the RENA numbers. So it's an overview of the RENA numbers, you know, the, the zoning portion of it, and the emergency shelter.
So we'll add.
You know, it's RHNA.
Yeah.
Including the RHNA numbers, is ordinary, okay. So now we've got, hold the city council, planning commission, housing element study session, providing an overview of the housing element, including a zoning ordinance revision, RHNA numbers, and an emergency shelter overlay. Everybody clear?
Yes.
Relevant, measurable?
Yeah, on our, on our last objective, we had said with public input. Can we add that at the very end?
Uh, right, sure, that's fine. Here, right here?
Yep.
Okay, that, because that part, whenever it's the who, it goes in the who column.
It's a study session, so public input is, is always there.
And, well, if, if you put public input all the time, you want to be selective about where you're really, where you, I mean, you've got overall public input, but then you've got dedicated public input that is planned for, so it's appropriate to put it there.
Okay.
Um, okay, were, were we supposed to put public input in the first one? A public workshop regarding accessory? I don't think so. Well, anyhow, then the last one is by the August meeting, and that would be late, so we're, what we're looking at, is the city manager will present to the city council an update on potential funding sources, for example, grants and cost sharing for updating the general plan. Remember, the money is always a big issue with general plan updates. So the city manager will present to the council an update on potential funding sources, for example, grants, cost sharing for updating the general plan. Does that make sense to everybody? That needs to be an objective under this goal? Anybody have a problem with it? Now, we need to, we need to do that a bit sooner than August. What do you think, Jeff?
Why? Why do we have to do it before August?
Well, uh, you're going to, the latest date for any of these would be the fifteenth of July to fall within, within the six month flow. So it could be, it could be by July fifteenth, or by August, I guess it could be by August first, but if it has to be a city council session, it would be the, uh, the July. Let me look. It'd be the July twenty seventh.
We may not have a July council meeting.
Well, you may not have a July council meeting, but I suspect that you may have a July retreat, or, I mean, strategic planning session. Because remember, they're different. They're not the same.
It can always be revised.
And so the twenty seventh of July, it wouldn't have to be the twenty seventh of July, it's whatever you decide. Why don't you just say, well, by the July, by, by the July, uh, since you don't have a city council meeting.
Or by August first works.
By, by August first. Okay, let's, just put by August first. That, that, because that is the last, that is the last date for all these, and then you're being consistent. Okay, so everybody's clear and okay with that? All right, now let's look at the next, the next one, and then we'll take a, uh, we'll take a break. Um, a lunch break. Ensure fiscal stability is the goal. At the April of twenty twenty one council meeting, the city manager will present development process to focus on economic outlook and possibilities. What questions do you have about what this means, or do you understand it?
I, I think if we maybe put, now that I'm looking at it on a paper, uh, present overview of development process.
Present an overview of the development process, and development of what?
Well, all of our properties.
Yeah, okay, development of, of process, of properties.
Is, is it actually a process, or is it a, um, opportunities, option?
The process means how to do something. So is this how to do something?
It's, it's partially, and it's also for feedback, you know, by council. We're going to present options and.
Yeah, it's options.
I think it's more options, it seems.
Okay.
Instead of process.
And that's my bad. I, I wrote that. That's my bad.
Okay. I like. There's no blame there. We're, we're working on it. Okay, present an overview, present overview, not an overview. What, why don't you, do you want overview or just present development options?
Okay.
Present development options for all properties to focus on economic outlook and possibilities. Now, is that going to be clear to the public what that means when they read this?
City owned properties.
City owned, it is city owned, right? Okay, present development options for all city owned properties to focus on economic outlook and possibilities.
I think we can get, we can delete possibilities because we now have options.
Okay. All right, so present development options for all city owned properties to focus on economic outlook. If you're focusing on outlook, give me an example of what that means. You see, what, what part of my role is to just get clarity and ask questions.
Well, we, part of that presentation is, uh, in, in those options is what makes economic sense for that property. Uh, it's, it's not so much the, the strategy of what we're going to put out there or anything like that, but what are some of the options focused on? What would uh, be a good strategy for the investment of that, those resources to the city for.
So it's like, it sounds more like for economic opportunities. Right? From what you just said, we present development options for all city owned properties to, that, which focuses on economic opportunities.
Or feasibility, really.
Yeah, or, or both. Maybe it's not either or, but both and. To focus on economic feasibility and.
And opportunities, I like that.
How's that work? That work? You said develop options for all city properties to focus on, that focuses on, rather than to, that focuses on economic feasibility and opportunities.
Yeah, I like that.
Everybody okay?
Yeah, that's good.
With that.
Jeff, they've got you in there. How, how, how's that, that sound clear to you?
Yep.
Okay, and the suggestion, now remember one thing about strategic planning. A strategic plan should always drive the budget. I remember when I did a lot of things for the state of California, um, uh, facilitation that they were saying, now, that particular governor, I can't remember what the governor, which governor it was, said, I want every department to, to have a strategic plan and align that, uh, in, in terms of putting in your budget proposals. So what, is, is there any? So what, is, is there any, is this, is this making sense to you? This okay, Jeff?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, the, the process for this has kind of started and, and we're, we've been prepping a presentation. It was just a question of exactly how council wanted it and when we were going to do it, so this.
Yeah, because this will impact your budget is, is waiting till the end of April, early enough budgetarily to make a difference. Or do you need to have this sooner?
No, no, this, this is, April is fine.
Okay, so that'd be at the April, I think it's the 27th.
27.
I think when you're talking about development, you're talking about long-term.
Yeah, okay, good point.
It's not going to happen in the next six months.
All right, all right, let's look at the next one. Uh, at a, the city manager will present to the city council for consideration a two-year budget.
That was a, a, one of the items from before.
Uh huh.
And we talked about, um, Jeff mentioned that perhaps we don't even need this on the, on here. It's more of a, um, of a regular process at this point. However, there were considerations taking into account COVID and being able to, um, you know, track what may or may not happen going forward. So we wanted to make sure that it was, that was reiterated publicly um, to be able to, to look at that.
Okay, and that's a good thing to keep in mind is the, is, you know, what's going on externally that's going to have an impact. So given the impact of COVID, do you want to have an objective on here about a two-year budget up to the group?
Well, and, and part of that is, we did, we did their, our last two-year budget, which were on the first year of pre-COVID. So revisiting a two-year budget, redoing the whole two-year budget process now with the realities of COVID uh, seem to me the smart way to move forward, just because, because we're on a different playing field. And that's why it's back on there only after a year, uh, to kind of tie in all the COVID stuff.
But you're already doing a two-year budget, so isn't, instead of for consideration, to continue a two-year budget process?
Yes.
See, because consideration sounds like you haven't done it before. Okay, presented to the city council.
Is it a revised two-year budget?
Yeah, that's the cons.
Yeah, or is it, is it 21?
The budgets are always revised.
Um, the, I understand, the consideration is, is that, is that it's brought to council for us to actually review. I mean, we, we do, you're right, we have a two-year budget, but we've already started to your budget. We want to re, kind of reset the, reset the clock.
Right.
Yes.
And do you think it needs to be in the strategic plan, or is that obviously something that you're automatically going to do?
Well, the reason, yeah, if I might, the reason that's in the strategic plan is because we think that, that we, we need a new strategy, just given the environment has changed.
And a new strategy means going back to a one-year budget?
No, 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 no. It's, it's to revise the two-year, but to bring with it new information based on the last year that we've lived in. We, we, when we initially put this, the, the two-year budget together, we were under a, a different environment, a different.
Oh, yeah, right.
We were working under different assumptions. Now we have, now we have new assumptions.
Okay, so we have here, presented to the city council for consideration, a revised two-year budget. Is that accurate?
Um, except, uh, it seems to me, I mean, granted, we're only in year one of a two-year budget. It seems to me that every year there will be a new two-year budget, right? We're not only revising, but we're also adding, so, um, uh, you know, not to get into too much detail, but are we revising the old one and creating a new one? Or, or just simply, um, presenting the new two-year budget?
Or is it that you're getting feedback about, um, how, how well the two-year budget process is working and whether or not there needs to be revisions?
I think the, I mean, Jeff, but the two-year budget is, is, um, the right to be.
That's the right tool.
The budget is great, however, I think next year's version of it, uh, the second year of this budget is, doesn't apply right now. So we're starting over with a new two-year budget. Um, starting this next fiscal year with the realities of COVID. So it's, it's a revised two-year budget, I think, just for simplicity sake, we're going to revise the two-year budget and, and get on another cycle, because I don't, looking at the numbers for next year, they don't make sense based upon what we're doing right now. And we might as well do the two-year budget, because we're on a two-year budget cycle, so let's do next year and the year after, and stick to that two-year cycle, but revise it due to COVID.
So it'd be the 21, 23 budget?
Twenty?
No, yes.
Twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three.
So, so two-year budget, you go from 21 to 23.
Yeah.
That's two. I always got, when I was on the state board, I always got it all mixed up with all, all of the years. Okay, so is this correct then? Present to the council for consideration a revised two-year budget? Or, or are you just presenting a revised?
Yeah.
Two-year budget, represented for action. It's really rather than consideration, it's for action.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes, and I, I think the numbers in there helps explain it a lot better.
Okay, and then if you have here, um, that, that's typically done in June anyway, isn't it?
Yeah.
You have to have it by the 30th of June. Aren't you on, you're on a July-June calendar, I mean, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, then that's all right, the way it is, Jeff?
Uh, it's fine with me. I'll defer to the council on that.
Okay, all the rest of you, okay? Is it clear?
Yes.
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 All right, next, uh, next objective, the city manager will report to the city council on the feasibility of a contract.
Marilyn, Gail, have a question?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Gail.
I need the June meeting date.
Oh, sorry. I'll look here. June 22nd, there's five Tuesdays in June.
22.
Okay, nothing like, having a paper calendar right now that I could flip to. Okay, um, at the May 23rd city council meeting, the city manager will report to the councilability on the feasibility of a contract writer. So this sounds like if it's the feasibility of it, are you wanting a decision on, on this? It's, it sounds like it's just a report. But is it that you're, you're going to present to the city council for action, the hiring of a contract grant writer?
I guess that depends on the feasibility.
Right, right. And the other thing is, there's a, a word missing that we wanted added on the feasibility of a contract grant researcher and writer.
Oh, okay.
Everybody felt that was important.
If, if, this sounds like it's a part of your budget process, right?
We have never had a contract grant writer.
No, I know that, but, but if you're going to have that in the budget, you probably would need to act on that pretty soon, so it could get factored into the budget, because grant writers are expensive unless it's totally, they get their pay, you know, based on what they get. So is, is this, is it the feasibility? Is it getting the council, is it, is it report? Or is it present to the council for action, the hiring of a contract grant researcher and writer?
It's stepwise. I mean, the, the project that we're giving the city managers to first go out and find us this, this resource and, and present to it, right, and present to us the, the scope and the cost of what.
So then you would say that, report to the council on the scope and the cost of a, a contract. There you got it. Okay.
And I think we could tie that into the budget in June if it was feasible, you know, that's, that's an easy add-in. Because we'll be doing the numbers at the same time, so that we can get that approval just.
So is, is, is May soon enough? Or does it need to be April?
May sooner, no, oh, I see what you're saying.
Well, because we have finance committee meetings in May. And that's kind of where the direction goes.
And you don't have them before May?
Not, uh, I mean, we have another one tomorrow, but, um.
I won't, I won't be ready by tomorrow with that.
So would we come on? Would we put April? How about April, so that we could be ready for the May finance committee?
And, and instead of, and then, okay, so at, would that work? So April, what did I say was?
Twenty-seven.
The 27th. At the April 27th, the city council meeting, the city manager will report to the city council on the scope and cost of a contract researcher, researcher and writer. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's look at the last one. At the May meeting, city manager will present contract review and summary. What does that mean?
Uh, we want to take an overview of all the city contracts, whether it's for planning, city attorney, um, maintenance things, and just review them, give an overview of costs. Um, some of the, you know, the main breakdown of the services that are provided and see if there's anything we're not using or using efficiently, and let council make a decision about, uh, if they want to move on any of those or, or, you know, review them or, or cancel them or, or whatever. Just an overview of all our contracts, so that everybody's on the same page, and they know where our contract dollars are going, and make a judgment if it's being, uh, properly used.
Present an overview of all city contracts? And then take out review, because that's overview. In summary, would it be a summary? Present an overview of all city contracts to the city council?
At, at the city council meeting.
Yeah, but, yeah, and that'll be, that'll be in the, the date. So present or present to the city council an overview of all city contracts, that might flow better. Present an overview to the city council of all city contracts. And you're doing that in line with the, um, budget as well, from what I'm picked up from you. So can that be April as well instead of May, or does that need to wait?
No, I, I think that's May, and, and I don't necessarily think that contracts come and go at different parts of the year.
Yeah.
If there were things we could cancel or wanted to cancel, we wouldn't necessarily do it for that.
Okay.
So.
Okay, is everybody all right on that one?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Pat, Pat, do you have any comments?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement.
Scott?
Yeah, same.
Okay.
All right, okay, you guys are doing a great job here. All right, now, what we're going to be doing after the lunch break. And if, if, remember, we have just one more, one more goal to go, and this is the.
We have two.
We have two.
You have two? Oh, so you had one.
Effectiveness and the municipal code.
Uh, okay. Hmm, I don't know about doing one before, and.
Well, we're going to break out into two groups on this next one. This was our single one, and then we break out into two groups next.
Let's see, okay, so, yeah, we have already done the single one, so we'll do that. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll look at, um, a group for city effectiveness and efficiency and for the other one, and so we'll need to break that into two groups. And you know what? I think you worked hard enough and long enough. I'm going to, I'm going to summarize and put you in groups uh, to develop those after lunch. All right, and I understand there's food coming to you. I didn't know that.
What?
That, well, that's, I got, I got, Jeff, clarify, because I got a call wanting to know what time I should, would be giving a break, and so I've been trying to work around that.
Um, no, I'm, I'm, if, if that was from Randy, that was just trying to find out how long the break was going to be, so if I had to.
Oh, okay, all right. I thought it was food, because I said, well, what, what food is, sorry, I got you all excited about food. Wow, that was a real bummer, wasn't it? Okay, Gail, could you take that screen away for a minute, because I want to do a summary?
Marilyn, I just have a, this is Scott, I have a process type question. So we've been looking at these goals individually, and you notice on there, the city manager is the who in a lot of that.
Well, I, yeah, I told you that.
Right, and, and realizing the situation that we're in, where, you know, we're going to be going through a whole process here pretty soon with, with the selection of city manager. Um, is there any part of the process that now that we've looked at these goals individually, then you have Jeff, for example, looking at it in total and seeing all those deadlines that are there and maybe revising them because they're not attainable?
Well, one of the things is that that's usually a part of the first review, next steps. So when you, when you come together for a monthly review of the progress on the goals and objectives, it's at that first one that you would have, which would be in, 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 um, it'd probably be, well, we're right at the beginning of February, it probably could be your February meeting. Jeff would have had a chance and his staff to look at that list and see if there are recommended adjustments. It doesn't happen right here. It happens as a part of the process. And also what, frankly, what this does is it says to you, at least as a neutral outsider, having gone through this literally thousands of times over the years, that the strategic plan drives the budget. And if you had as many things as you've got now for a city manager to do, you probably got another position that needs to come in to help out.
Yeah, I'm just looking at it as a whole, and maybe if we do look at that as a whole and take it into Jeff's feedback on it, that maybe some of the things that we've done in the individual, uh, goal items, we might look at it and say, you know, that's just a bridge too far.
Well, this is the reason why you get some, get some time to sleep on it, and you get your staff, and with Jeff in the lead now, to look at it and see from their perspective. If you don't try and do that, after you guys have gone through all of these goals and objectives and then have to go back to them as a whole, it's just not, it's just, the timing is not right for doing that. But it does get done in the, in the process of doing the updates. So he may come back to you and say, you know, number two, um, I, I've just got to tell you that, 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 that's just not going to be able to be done until this date. And so he presents that. Uh, this date, it, it's, it's, it's a form of communication between the council and, um, and the management team. And he, of course, has a, a good feeling from this, what the council's priorities are, because, you know, there's just very few staff people that are, that are here. So, um, it, it is also going to have an impact, um, on what can be done with the staff that we have versus what could be done if we had an assistant of some sort or another to help. But you're right, it's got to be looked at in overall, but you kind of got to sleep on it to do that.
Scott, the other thing is, the, the grid is included in the council packet every month. And Dino would regularly update it. So as things happen, you know, just like the last time we did this, and so much shifted with COVID, right? He has the ability to shift things around and move it around if something happens early, which is why I try to buy him a little more time. So if he gets something early, then.
That's a good thing, because, you know, people are happy if you get done, uh, they're unhappy if you get done five minutes late in something. And they think you're great if you get done five minutes early. So I always encourage people, put yourself out a little further than you think is realistic. And I, and you can see me doing some of that when I've been reviewing with you. Is this really possible? Are you going to need more time? But one of the things that I'll be going with, over with, and this is for all of you, but in answer to your question, Scott, is I'm going to be going over the follow-up monitoring process and, and how that happens and how that values. And having sat on that state governmental board, this process, monthly looking at it, made a lot, uh, made a lot of help. Just having been in the chair of where you are versus being a facilitator. So what I'm going to do now, thank you for your questions and your input, all of you, they've done a great job of that. I'm going to just go back to the, the agenda itself, and we'll look at it and see. You've got a lot done with our welcome and public comment and purpose, and going over the roles and introductions and reviewing mission, vision, values, and goals, and you did a good, great job on, excuse me, on the SWOT, the strengths of Delray Oaks and the weaknesses and the external factors. And you, you went over your goals, and basically you kept your goals but added one, um, which, which sounded like it was immediately, there was consensus on it. And you've gone through three of the str, uh, goals in terms of strategic objectives. So we've got to go through those and, you know, individually, and then go through them, which of course will take probably, you know, a couple of hours. And, um, and then we'll go through next steps and how you monitor, summarize, and be done by 2:30. So what I'm going to give you, uh, is a, tell me what you need. Some groups go with 45 minutes, some groups would go with a half an hour. Give me your, give me your choice. One is I end up pushing you faster, uh, if it's 45, but if that's what you know, we could go from 12 to 12:45 or 12 to. to 12:45 or 12 to 12:30. So what's your feedback?
I think a half an hour is sufficient. This is Pat.
The rest of you are comfortable with that? I don't want you to feel like, oh, gosh, I just have fire hose in my mouth.
I do, I do have to, I do have to kind of inform you. I have a hard stop actually at about one o'clock, but I, I need to prepare. So I will not be coming back after lunch until after probably two o'clock. And so, and I apologize for that, but it's not something that I have any power to, to change.
Okay, okay. So if you're going to go at one o'clock, John?
Uh, yeah, but it's, it's, it's a pretty important phone call that I need to prep for. So I will.
Okay. So, so no matter, no matter how, okay. Is it okay to say 12:30 for everybody? That's a half an hour.
That works for me.
All right. Okay. You're doing, you're doing a great job. You're right on target and we'll see you at 12:30.
John?
All right. Yeah.
John, if you have any particular comments about either of those, I'm happy to share.
Okay.
Um, I mean, obviously I can only be in one, but.
Sure. No, I know. You know, I know. No, I appreciate, I appreciate that. Those latter two, those latter two, I think, well, I mean, the, the ordinance ones is going to be, that's going to be a great discussion. You guys can handle that one. And the other one, I don't have any update or I don't have any inputs.
On effectiveness?
No, that's, I mean, that's totally going to be Jeff's and.
Okay. Then what, then what I'll do is I'll do effectiveness first while you're still gone and do the other one that you're most interested in.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
As soon as, as soon as my call's over, I will get back on. So.
Okay, great. Good job.
Based on that.
Thank you, public member for hanging in there.
Would it be better maybe to take a longer lunch break and because of what John has just said?
What do you think, group? Group is gone. Well, maybe we ought to just, let's just go ahead and go with the 30 minutes if you don't feel rushed with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that'll work because the groups will still be working on the objectives. It's just that he'll have a chance to get in on the discussion of the objective by me reviewing that one second instead of first after lunch. So you're going to be, you're going to be in one of two groups. And because we don't have three council members, you can have two breakout sessions separately in actual breakouts instead of having some here in the, in the room as a, as a group. Okay. I'll see you at 12:30.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
All groups have started, one on effectiveness and the other one on municipal code. And I don't see any public members to be assigned. So if one comes, we'll put it in there.
Hi Marilyn.
Hi Kim, are you a secretary?
We finished, we finished. No, Jeff was.
Oh, okay, so hopefully he's sending it off to coming up and sending out to Gail. I see him still in the room and I noticed that the other two of you were gone and I thought, he's all there by himself.
We ditched him, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if he's typing. Yeah, I'm not sure what he's doing.
Okay, hopefully he's typing because Gail needs to put that in the record. Let's see, let me see if I can get to him. It doesn't show.
Are you able to go into his room and?
That's what I'm, yeah, I'm trying to figure out how can I can communicate with him though. It just gives me a chance to move him to another room. Or maybe I could say. I'm just sending out general broadcast to everybody.
Have you lost Jeff?
He's just, he's still shows that he's still in the move, in the, in the meeting room. That he hasn't come out.
Because I clicked leave meeting too often, I had to re-log on.
Oh, yeah, that happens, that happens. Yeah, I hope, yeah, I hope, I hope he's, well, now, now he's out. So maybe he's coming now out to the meeting. Okay, Alex, were you a, were you a recorder again? Here, I can't.
The mayor, the mayor was, she'll be joining us momentarily.
Okay. Thank you. I always appreciate people who volunteer to record because that's not usually what somebody, anybody wants to do. So thank you for doing it last time, Alex.
Kim and I recommended to Jeff that he be our scribe.
You jumped in there, that was awesome. And made the recommendation.
Before he had a chance to assign it to us.
I know, that's right.
He's been working really hard. I've been very impressed with him on our planning meetings.
He's really doing a great job.
He's a nice guy.
Yes, absolutely.
Allison, welcome. If you could go ahead and give your, if you can go ahead and give your objectives to Gail, please? In the chat? There we go, I think everybody's coming out. Jeff? Could you unmute yourself for a minute? Okay.
All right. I haven't, haven't had time to type it up because I got in La La Land or whatever. I was in the no zone, it would let me out.
I hope it wouldn't let you, okay, so if you can go ahead and give those to Gail?
Yes.
All right.
Working on it.
Allison, were you in the same group with Jeff?
Yes.
Oh, so Allison.
No, Allison wasn't in the same group as Jeff.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, I didn't think you were, but I thought maybe I got confused. Okay.
It was him and Jeff and Pat. Allison, how many will you be sending to me?
So sorry about that top one, ignore the two number fives.
Oh, are they the same? Okay.
It was just a copy and paste and I, and I can't go back in and edit. So the first one is at the May council meeting, the CM announces.
Yeah.
And I can't even delete it, so.
I know, it's one of the weaknesses of Zoom.
I'm glad we have it, but there are weaknesses. Just relax for a few minutes while that gets typed in.
How many will you be sending? I have four so far.
How many did you have, Allison?
Three.
Three? Because there's two of them that are duplicates is what.
I know, please, please ignore both items that have a number five on top of them.
Okay.
The first one is the May council meeting, CM announces one July.
Yes.
And then we have a second one by July 1. And then the third one is the August council meeting.
Okay. Just relax for a minute, Jeff is putting in the objectives from, from his group. And we did have a public member that joined one of the groups. That was good. He came in and asked if he could be in the group.
Alex, or is the public allowed to participate in the groups?
No, no, they're just, they're just to listen.
Okay, thank you.
But of course, they'll, they'll have the complete record. All they have to do is contact the city manager and say, I'd like to have a written copy. And of course, this is also being recorded, so the public can also see it visually on record here.
I also just wanted to mention for Kim and Scott, that you'll get a copy of all the final items.
Yeah, everything, everything that's been typed, you get a copy of.
Yeah.
All right.
And, and Mr. Gail, Gail will have it done within 30 minutes, just going through and proofreading it. And then Jeff will probably, I don't know, delegate that maybe to Karen to send out, I don't know. I don't want to interrupt Jeff. Do you have other objectives, Jeff, or are you finished? I'm sorry, you're mute, I can't hear you.
It's a term of 2020, you're on mute. I should be three there, if you have three, that, that should be good.
Okay, good, thank you both to the recorders. I know that job is not the best job to have and I always appreciate it when you are willing to do it. All right, and Gail's just now finishing typing up the objectives and you know the process. And Gail will tell me when she's got them all in so that we can start doing that and just take a stretch.
I thought we were gonna go over the follow-up process.
Yeah, you still want me to do that first?
Yes, please.
Okay, then I'll do that. What I'm gonna do while Gail is typing, I'm gonna go up, I'm gonna go on monitoring the goals and objectives. And, and you've seen, you've seen this, so it's not strange to you, but what you do monthly is you see all these dates, by when, who will do what. And then monthly, let's say this one gets done, so there's an X. The same thing is true here and the, I, I made this matrix years ago because people were spending way too much time updating goals and objectives in meetings and it needs to be, it needs to be quick, but it needs to be visual so that you can also have this on the, on the screen and people can see it. And so the comments column I made deliberately very short, it's not for a full report. And then if you look down here at this one, by February 15th, and these I just made up. More research is needed, that's why it's been revised. And it says when the date was changed from, and actually, some people actually cross out the old date and put in the new. I think it's okay to just put in the new, but that's up to you. And then this one, when it says it's on target, that means the date still works and it's moving forward. So what's going to happen is between this and your next council meeting, and since you'll probably, you'll be presenting this at the council meeting for the public, so the public has it. By the next council meeting, one of the things that, that, that the city manager will be doing, with, with staff, I'm sure, is going through the dates. You see, all of these objectives have been done separately from each other. And one of the things, when the city manager looks at them, he can see, oh my gosh, there's so many things in this particular date, that's gonna need to be adjusted. So you need to be prepared for the adjustment of dates so that they are realistic from a staffing standpoint. And also, one of the things that's really helpful when you're saying that something's gonna happen in a city council meeting is that that then helps you with developing the agendas and making sure you're not getting too many things on the. and making sure you're not getting too many things on the agenda that are gonna need to, to have decisions. So this is done every month. And then the last one is done, just like with this one. It is mailed out to everybody. And then what happens? We look at, see what got done, but we also look and see what, what you wanna carry forward. So this, this is the process that goes through. And this was, like I say, an anonymous sample that I just put together so you could see what the process, process was. Okay, Gail, are we?
Yes.
Are we?
Uh huh.
And I'll, you tell me which one you want to start with.
I'll just pull up the record. Let me get back into Zoom here.
I think we wanted to do the efficiency first. So if.
That's right, because, that's right.
Ron comes back.
Because thank you for that reminder. Okay.
And there you have it.
So here is enhance the city's effectiveness and efficiency. And it doesn't look like we've got dates for the first one or who. Research costs and bring a recommendation to council for action on the hiring of a temporary employee for the hiring of a, oh, it says twice. Bring recommendation for, on the hiring of a temporary employee to assist in the city's record management project. Okay, so research costs and bring a recommendation to the council for action. See, it can be action, direction, consideration, and then it's all legal. On the hiring of a temporary employee to assist in the city's records management project. Is this action clear, group? Anybody have a question or unclear? Okay. Do you see that this objective is relevant to the goal and it helps carry out the goal? We have a D over here on three before the three year. Okay, everybody clear, relevant, measurable? Will you be able to tell if it's happened? All right. Now what we need to do is figure out who's gonna research the costs and bring a recommendation to the council.
Same as the other two.
This. City manager, city manager.
By May 1.
I was hoping for your sake it was somebody else. Okay.
And it's, well, somebody else maybe do some of the work, but I'll, I'll bring it to council.
But then, then what you do is you'd say who is helping you with the work? Do you have somebody on staff?
At, at this point, it'll be up to me. Well, if, if, if I change it, I'll, I'll, I'll change it later.
Okay, so May 1st is okay for the date?
Yes, the, keep in mind that all of these are for the next budget cycle to see which one of these we can do and which ones we want to prioritize for the next budget cycle.
Okay. So by May, everybody's okay with that one? Don't let me go faster than you want to. All right, then look at by May 1, the city manager will research costs and bring a recommendation to city council for action on updating the city's personnel manual. What questions do you have on this? Comments? Makes, makes sense that you have a personnel manual that's up to date?
So my question is, do we have a personnel manual?
Figure it says updating.
Yes, we do.
Okay, yeah, since it's got updating, I figured.
I want to say the last update was probably 2009. I don't have it in front of me. Certain laws have changed. AB 1825 requires some language about harassment, training and policy. And there are some procedural things as far as hiring and firing that I'd like to work with Alex to straighten out as far as department heads having the ability to actually fire somebody. So the appeal actually goes to the city manager for like a scaly hearing. And then the council is the final appeal and arbiter instead of gumming it all up in the middle and the city manager, it makes it a little clunky. So there are things like that that we need to fix.
Now, I, I have a question. So is this an internal updating? Or is it like the first objective that we just talked about? Is it a, a hiring for someone to do that updating?
So it's, it's, it's a little bit of both, Scott. What'll happen is, and I've already started on this last year. When I was in the chief's office, I've been working with RGS, talking about them about costs. Not to get too deep in the weeds, $7,000 to $10,000 thing probably because we have some good base to it. But then they have to update some of the, the recent changes in law. And then we would internally review some of the processes. Like I said, some of the hiring and firing practices to clarify those things. Alex would work on it and then we would bring it to council for approval.
Okay, any other questions or comments? You see how this relates to effectiveness and efficiency? Everybody okay? And May 1st, so that it can be a part of the budget process is what Jeff said. All right, the next one, the city manager will research costs and bring a recommendation to the city council for action on updating the city's records retention policy.
And if Alex doesn't mind, I'd like to add him on who, now that I think about it, it's probably appropriate if he goes on there.
That's fine.
Okay.
Again, do we have a city records retention policy?
Yes, we do. And it's probably a couple of generations old.
That word updating lets you know that it, that it is.
Is that part of the municipal code or is that a resolution or?
It's usually adopted by resolution, but it's a standalone policy.
Okay.
And it, yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll help kind of clear the loggerhead of a lot of things that we have in city hall and make searching records more efficient and a lot of other reasons for doing it.
Okay. Does everybody see why these are all May 1st? Because they could have budgetary implications?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Then we will move to the next goal on the municipal code. And the first one says at the May 23rd city council meeting, the city manager announces July 1 deadline for municipal code review and revisions from the public. What questions do you have about what this means? And, and you're announcing it to, to whom? The public?
Yes.
So you're announcing it in May that the public has until July 1st to review the municipal code and make suggestions for revision?
May, yes.
Okay.
Okay, now it's to the public, the July 1 deadline. We probably ought to put in there 2021, I mean, yeah, 2021 deadline for the municipal code review and revision items. And then, yeah. Somehow or another, we need to keep in the idea that the public is giving input on that, right?
Yes.
And so it would be their participation in the municipal code review and revision items. Is that right?
I think it's, so if you go to the third one, what we were suggesting is that each department and council person will provide items that they consider, they would want us to consider for review and revision by July 1. So we wanted to make sure that the public also has that opportunity to provide particular items that they might like to see reviewed and revised.
You know what that sounds like though, is it sounds like it's not their input. It sounds like an announcement that they're going to get to have input. Is that what you mean?
No, we want them to provide input by July 1.
Okay, the same thing is true of number one and number three, right? So the announce to the public.
It's like the opportunity to provide municipal code review and revision items.
Okay, let, let's look at that to make sure this is clear.
Help me, Carolyn.
We just want to make sure that they know that their deadline, in fact, instead, the announcing is sort of a tactical thing. That's something we need to do. I think that what you probably want to say here is that the city manager will share input from the public regarding the municipal code review and revision.
Well, then we can wrap up all three of our items into that.
I think.
Because we're, we want it from all the various entities. Okay.
Yeah, so instead of announcing that something's gonna happen, you actually announce what has already happened. And then one of the first steps is to announce to the public the deadline. And so that, that would be, that would become a sub thing under here. So let's go back to this one first. The city manager will provide a summary or will provide a report on the public's input for, for the municipal code review and revision. Will provide to the city council, the public, public input regarding the public municipal, I mean, the municipal code review and revision.
So actually, we're asking him to provide a report on all kinds of input on those items.
Okay, but do you want to have them be separated so that you know that this group is, is in charge here? And this group is, the public is here. It sounds like we have different groupings getting the input, right?
Yes.
Yeah. My understanding, and Allison, you can correct me, is we're looking for the public, for the city council members, planning commissioners, employees and all contract staff to provide input to the city manager as to what provisions or titles or chapters of the municipal code need revision.
From their perspective.
From their perspective. And then the meeting of the city council to sort of prioritize that.
Okay, so let's, let's look. Alex, why don't you state how this one would state for the public?
May 23rd to the city council meeting.
Ignore the May 23rd for just now.
Yeah, yeah.
Provide to the city council a report on.
Provide to the city council a report on all feedback in response to solicitation of municipal code provisions needing revision.
Great.
Okay, I'm gonna, I couldn't type as fast as you could.
Yeah, okay.
So provided the city council a report on all feedback in response to solicitation of municipal code revisions needed.
Possible revisions.
Possible, yeah.
Because then we'll priori, or.
Yeah, then no.
Prioritize.
And you want to say public in there, I think, Alex, somewhere.
Provide city council a report on all feedback in response to solicitation.
All feedback from the public.
To solicitation for municipal code possible revisions.
There you go.
Period.
But, but this is supposed to be focused on the public, right?
This is different. This is, this is, this is the second one. So if we could delete the word needed at the end of that sentence. Yeah, so I think that's the second action. The first action is announce to the, to the public, elected, appointed officials as well as city staff and contractors.
Gail's gonna need to type this. Alex, just a minute.
Well, I, okay, I didn't realize it was the final, final edit there.
It's easier people can see what you said.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, announce to the public, elected and appointed officials, comma, city employees.
Right.
Comma, and city contractors. The city's intention to revise the municipal code. And.
Requesting their feedback?
Exactly, perfect, yeah. Intention, comma, and requesting input or feedback. Yeah.
Okay, let's see how this goes. And then that second part would, would not be in there, right?
Two actions here.
Yeah, yeah, but we'll make them in separate objectives, okay? So the first one is announce to the public, elected and appointed officials, city employees, city contractors and, and city contractors. The city's intention to revise the municipal code and request their input or feedback.
Yeah, I like that. So get rid of the comma and, yeah, there you go. Super.
And request their input or feedback.
There you go. And.
There we go. Okay, announce to the public, elected and official.
You can eliminate the second one. Because that was a duplicate anyway.
Yeah, so we'll take that one out.
Yeah.
And then, and then you said, Alex, the one that's at the bottom would be number two?
Yes, I think the current number two can be deleted.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, provide to the city council a report on all feedback in response to solicitation for municipal code possible revisions.
How about this, for possible municipal code revisions?
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
I always want to have a city attorney at these.
We, we can get rid of the second possible.
This one, this possible can come out.
So does that make sense to folks that were not part of our group?
That's what I was, my next question.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. I just want to make sure. In fact, yeah. Everybody understand how this is? The first is an announcement because it's so broad. It, it lets everybody know who's being solicited for information. And then this one is getting the feedback. I'm, I'm, my question up here, which we didn't really address, is do you want to wait till May for this? To actually announce to them?
I mean, I don't want it to be too attenuated such that we announce it, you know, in February and then July.
No, 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 I'm not thinking of February.
Yeah. Jeff, do you have a sense as to timing from, from your budget perspective and things like that as to when, you know, it's kind of a one-two punch?
So I think May is fine. I don't think we can get everything done and get cost analysis by our, our code folks to really tie in to the July 1 start date. So I think doing this and then getting the feedback, coordinating with you about what, you know, and the council about what we really want to implement, what we want to do and getting that plan together. By the time we get that done, we're coming up to mid-year budget review or close enough to it to see what monies we have in council to execute, even if it's a little bit before that. And if not, depending on COVID and everything else, we can see if we want to execute that mid-year budget review. So somewhere in that three to six month after the start of the budget, I see a timeline of maybe executing if we get this all done. So, but I don't think we can get it all done and get cost by budget anyway. So I think it's fine. If that makes.
Okay, but is the May, is the May date this first objective or is it down here? This is just making an announcement that it's coming.
No, I, I'm speaking of both. I think the May announcement is fine.
And then when, when would they, when would you get, this is a lot of feedback that you're gonna get. So how much time would you need to actually give a report on all the feedback in response?
So our earlier dates, taking into account the fact that June is generally very busy with the next year budget and wrapping up this fiscal year was to have a July 1 deadline and then give Jeff and everybody a month and a half until the August deadline or the August city council to present what we were thinking was his priorities and then the council could interact with that.
Okay, so you all are on track with, this is, this is future, right?
August.
Yeah, so August, this is gonna be, this would be the August city council meeting.
Yeah.
So at the August city council meeting.
Right.
Which would be, that's, that's what I was concerned about is that this was on May. And then how fast was this gonna come up? Because this is gonna take a long time to put together. And the August date would be August 24th.
Right. Jeff, does that make sense for you?
Yeah, absolutely.
In time.
I was gonna say the August council meeting myself, Mayor, so that, that's.
Okay, so that's, that's on track. That's what I was trying to get. All right, so we've got, we've got this one finished, correct? Oh, that's, is it city manager again?
Yes.
It is.
City manager, you need to have in here that you have an assistant full-time forever. Your name is everywhere. You know, that's not a problem with most, most of retreats or workshops because they just right at the time say, I'm delegating that to finance director or I'm delegating that to public works or whatever. And so, you know, it's, it's very different. So what that means is that all of you need to be really accepting of, of switching of dates that. really accepting of, of switching of dates that now look okay, but they're in isolation. There are five different goals that have separate objectives. And that's why that first review needs to, needs to have some time to go, go. Okay, Gail, we've covered.
Marilyn, one, one thing, it's, it's Scott, one thing I think we need to add, just a, a, a word in there on that second objective is prioritize. So it would be provide to the city council a report on all feedback in response to solicitation and feed, and priorities for possible.
Okay, so you're not talking about.
He's gonna, yeah, he's gonna provide feedback and he's also gonna give his, his priorities.
Okay, so you're wanting his priorities rather than the priorities of those who gave input?
Well, yeah, his recommended priorities. And then, and then it's up to us to basically determine which areas will ultimately focus on.
Okay. All right. And let me just ask the group, is it possible to do all that report and also do priorities within two months?
Yeah, Marilyn, I think prioritization is going to be probably pretty clear and pretty easy.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to protect you, Jeff.
Yeah, no, I don't, I, I think with the feedback and the priorities, that, that's, that's probably going to be one of the, prioritizing is probably going to be one of the easiest things.
Okay, so provide to the city council a report on all feedback in response to solicitation. And, and, and so it is going to be recommending priorities to the council to take action. It isn't saying and, and in response and, and having this, this group give their priorities. This is the priorities that you're recommending to the council, right?
The theory was that he will have a better hands-on knowledge of the, all of the various pieces. And so for him to bring, you know, create those ties for the council and then we can discuss and change if we feel appropriate.
Okay, so is the council acting on these priorities at this meeting? Or, or is this, there's that for, for people to reflect on and come perhaps at the next meeting?
I didn't necessarily see it as an action item on, on the part of the city council to adopt those priorities. It was just more of being able to encapsulate all the feedback and input and then, you know, city manager providing, hey, look of these things, I think these are the priorities. Without necessarily having.
So it's recommend priorities for future action, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. So you're not expecting to take a vote on the priorities. And then you can determine from that, you may end up making that, that a, a separate objective as you get closer to the time is to take action on the, on the priorities. But right now, this just lets you know they're going to come up with priorities, but the council's not expected to take action on the priorities when they get that report.
I think that's a safe bet at this point. You know, as we get closer, as we understand the realities of the budget, you know, Jeff may say, oh, my God, we have to do these three and then we take action. But I, I want to give him the leeway. A, depending upon the feedback and B, depending upon, you know, whether we have any money at all.
Sure, okay. All right, that finishes all of our goals, correct?
Yes.
All right, now, now, remember, if you fail the plan, you plan to fail. And I always say, if you don't work the plan, the plan doesn't work. So what we're going to do now is we're going to have the screen and we're going to look at the monitoring process. And, I mean, the, not the monitoring process, I'm sorry, it's Gail's screen. We're going to look at, there's a matrix for just doing the follow-up. It's called next steps follow-up process. So, you know, Gail, we probably need to have one on there that says who's going to distribute the record.
Yes, you're right, but I just called up the wrong one. It's.
Oh, okay.
When they're really small, it's hard to see.
Oh, yes, they are. They're very hard to see.
I have a feeling. Is this, is that the one? No, it's the other one. They're so tiny, I can't tell them apart.
Yeah, what we're talking about is when you, when you say you want to share a screen, you can hardly read what, you have the screen set up by title, but you have a hard time actually being able to read the little tiny print. So let's, let's give her a minute. You're doing a good job, Gail.
Keep picking. There we go.
Okay, now, this is, no. Okay, the first step though actually is, is that you will have the, the record distributed. And Jeff, who would do that? Would that be, would that be Karen?
Jeff, you're muted.
Sorry about that, Jeff.
That would be Karen.
That would be Karen. Okay, so we'll put Karen there. We distribute the meeting record and she hopefully would be able to do that tomorrow.
Yes, it'll be distributed in, in as usual, city, city hall staff, we will go over it tomorrow. And then during the next week, the police department staff will go over to, will go over it. And then during the week also, it'll be distributed to contract staff.
Okay, but now this, this record, those of you that have participated ought to have it right away. In other words, tomorrow, that there's a direct relationship between getting that record and sort of cemented, cementing it by reading it. So the participants, we're not talking about the public or other people, we're just talking about all of you that are in this retreat. And of course, the public can ask for it too. Because what you're going to get is you're going to get the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, the mission, the vision, the values, the goals, the objectives and the next steps. So that, that will be on record right away.
So if Karen gets it today, then it'll be out to this afternoon in email to everyone that participated and probably a hard copy waiting for them at city hall.
Okay, is she, is she, oh, yeah, I guess I keep thinking more later in the afternoon. I didn't want to suggest today and put so much, she is so great. I wish I had thought to give her accolades. So we'll make this up today, which is Tuesday, February 2nd instead of February the 3rd. Okay, then Kim, Kim posts the strengths? No, not, you know what you're doing? You're using it from the last record. Kim doesn't work there anymore.
Randy.
So this would be, how do you spell Randy? R-A-N-D-Y?
R-A-N-D-Y.
R-A-N, Randy, okay. Post the strengths on the city's website. That is a great marketing tool for the city. It really lets people know. Golly, they've been doing a lot of things, even though with COVID. And I'll let you speak timewise for Randy. He'll have that today. How soon might he post those strengths? You're muted again, I'm sorry.
I keep, I'm afraid of what I'm going to say if I'm not muted and then.
That's okay. So could that be tomorrow? So that's Wednesday.
I'm not unmuting myself, I'll wait.
Okay. Then we always have the city manager with his staff review the weaknesses, challenges list for possible action items. Everything that's in the weaknesses list does not end up becoming an objective, but there are, there's good feedback there. And as a result, it's important to look at that list and see if, are there actions that we could be taking that aren't necessarily objectives, but that's just looking at the list. And then when do you typically have your management meetings, Jeff?
Well, we have them on Mondays, but we'll, we'll, we will probably do that one tomorrow.
Okay, I mean, if you feel, if you feel like you need more time on that, that's okay.
No, and then you can actually put Karen and Randy. Randy does a
Randy's. Okay, and the police chief is okay on that too, to go through that? Okay, and Randy, R-A-N-D-Y. Okay, then the city manager, share and discuss the strategic plan with city staff and contractors face to face. We do this because if you post it or, or you email it to people, it doesn't have the same feeling. And I don't know whether, I, I think we put contractors deliberately because they were filling positions before. And that is, it makes them feel like that actually this is, this plan doesn't just belong to the people that were at the workshop, but it is something for all of us. So oftentimes staff are, are really nervous about these kind of, of workshops or retreats because they think, oh, my gosh, did they decide they needed to do layoffs or what do they do? And so this is something, and at this point, this would probably be a draft. Because you won't be able to share your strategic plan with the public until, until February meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's, yeah, that's when, and that's when our, we'll first publish the objectives.
Yeah, so, so what you might do is just, let's see, that would be February 23rd would be the date. So because it's a long time for people to wait for 21 days. Then you, you share them with this, letting them know that it's going to be acted upon at the, at the council meeting. Typically, what most city councils do is it is consent, it's a consent calendar item because you've been through it all day and you've come to consensus all day. So share and discuss, you might want to even say the draft strategic plan, but I don't think you need to. And that's something that should, that should happen ideally within a week, Jeff, if you can do that.
Yeah, no, we can get it done by.
By Friday? Can you get it done by Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, so by Friday. That is February, the, I never use this calendar so much, February 5th. And the same thing, chief. Police chief, would you, is Chris still with us?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, could you, is that possible? Because I know you've got round the clock. And so that's harder to get to than this, but this face to face is much better than just handing them or posting it.
I will be there when my city manager wants me there.
Okay, so city manager, do you want him to do it by the end of the day on Friday? Um, or is that realistic?
Probably not realistic with everybody because we have reserve staff. I would give the, the police department actually a couple of weeks because we.
Yeah, and usually, you know what, police and fire, we typically do give a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So why, why don't we do that for both? So why don't we do that for, be the 12th? Let's see, the 19th would be, let's see, two weeks would be the 16th. Is it possible to do that by the 15th?
Yeah.
Okay, 15th for both of them, Gail, the 15th for this one and that one, right? Because you know, you don't, but what you need to do, I'll tell you this. One of the things is that some people share earlier than other people. So what you need to do tomorrow is you need to tell the staffs that report to you that, that the retreat, you're going to give them, you are going to walk through the retreat with them. But that, that it's at different times, so don't be surprised if some staff members know before others. That way they're not thinking, how come, how come that they know and we don't? And so it's called a prevention of anxiety. Then at the city council, at the February 23rd meeting, usually this, it's the city, city manager does this and shares the updated strategic plan with the public. I don't know whether you want that to be a city council's chair or the city council and the city man, city, or the mayor and the city manager. I think in the past, it's done by this, been done by the city manager. Shares that, you know, it's, it's, it's an agenda item and goes over it.
Mayor, if you want, I'm more than happy to do a quick staff report and give an overview of the process and the plan and some of the main points that we've come up with.
Okay, then, all right, is that okay then? So city man, that's usually city manager. Then monthly and put a report, do, report, report from the objective leads needs to be in by the, by the 22nd because you want to be sure that you have the first and the 15th that's up to date. So the city council and the city manager, well, actually, the city manager monitors the progress. That, this is city manager first, monitor the progress on the goals and objectives and, and recommends revising objectives as needed. And that's the city manager. And actually, you can put the city manager and the council because it also comes before a council. And then this, the city manager provides a written updated the objective, you know, see, that's when this comes in. So the city council, here, Gail, let's take this city council out. Leave this the manager, he, he then, and this will probably be Karen, provide a written update of the objectives. Isn't, isn't she the one that's been doing that before? This objective is done, this one's on target. So people report into her their progress on their objective. And then the city council reviews, reviews the goals and objectives. Somehow we've stated this differently in the past. And then monthly, that's reviewed at a city council meeting. So monthly, the next one is monthly, the city council reviews the progress on the goals and objectives. Somebody's got their phone on, I can just hear their phone. And then this would be, this, the target here is late July, so just July 2021 is, the, the specific date is set. So here's the city council, the city manager, the police chief, city attorney. You thoroughly assess the progress on the goals and objectives and you develop the strategic objectives for the next six months. So if we review this scale, if we go to the top, it maybe it'll, I can just do a quick review. So you all will get the retreat record today from Karen. Please read it within 48 hours. Then Randy will post the strengths on the website. Then the city manager, the police chief, the city attorney, Karen and Randy will review the weakness list for possible action items and, and if there are any, report those. The city manager will share and discuss the plan with city staff and contractors face to face. Police chief will share and discuss the plan face to face. Both of them are the February 15th. City manager will update the strategic plan with the public. That's the initial plan that just was done today. Monthly, city manager and, and this should include his, his people too. So this, this would include the city, this city attorney, the Karen and Randy. I don't know. Alex, have you been involved in the monitoring of that or not?
I'm sorry, you dropped out there. Have I been involved in what?
Have you been involved in the monthly monitoring at all?
Uh, no, not, not in person.
So then let's just put, let's just put yeah, and staff, and staff. And then Karen provides this written update, this matrix like you got, just like she provided for today's. And then in July sometime, the retreat to assess the progress. So where they are, where we are now. Okay, we'll stop this, this share, screen sharing, okay, Gail? All right, so let's look back where we are now. So we had Allison as the mayor, welcoming purpose, goes through introduction of us. You then had introductions to get to know each other better. Then, then we read your mission statement, vision statement, core values and three-year goals. And that, those came from the 2019 strategic plan, the first year of a three-year plan. Then you reviewed the city's internal strengths and accomplishments as well as the internal weaknesses and challenges. You looked at external factors or trends, whether they're economic, political, technological, social, environmental, there's a whole lot of things. What, what, that you think will have an impact on the city positively, those are opportunities negatively, those are considered threats. You then reviewed and revised your goals in that you added a goal to the three, four goals, so you now have five. You have objectives for all of them. And you have next steps in the follow-up process. And I've just finished your summary. So for the closing remarks, what we do is go back to the group. And I'll end with Allison because you need to close the meeting. And what I ask each of you to reflect on is, and this is not an evaluation of the facilitation, that's not what we're talking about. What is one benefit you personally got out of working together today? So what's a takeaway? So if somebody says, why don't you get out of that all-day meeting? You've got something that's on the tip of your tongue. And, and oftentimes it's the first thing that kind of comes to your mind. So share whatever you'd like to share. You're actually way ahead. Unless the mayor takes, you know, 30 minutes to do a summary. So, you know, say what you'd like to say about what you've got out of working together. And Kim, I'll start with you. I'm just going to read the screen. Pat, did you have a question?
Yeah.
I have a question also.
I can't hear you.
Has John returned?
You know, he has not returned, but I think it sounded like he might not know whether he had or not. So I'm sorry that he didn't get back yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if he comes, then I'll incorporate him in and, and, and share some of, of what happened, okay? All right, so Kim, let's start with you. All right, so Kim, let's start with you. What's, what's one benefit you got out of today?
I loved having everyone together and just being able to sort of speak freely on our ideas and topics. I mean, in a structured way. So it was really nice to get to hear everyone's opinions and thoughts and I enjoyed that process. And I think as we move forward, it'll be beneficial to continue to do things, obviously strategic planning. I know it's been brought up about maybe doing some brainstorming sessions as well. I know, Pat, you, you had brought that up years ago. And I think if our council can do more of that and working together. I think as we move forward, things are going to get a little stickier for all of us as we've got some big things on our plate. And so the more that we can work together and share, share our ideas, I think we'll have a smoother road ahead. So I just enjoyed the opportunity to do that with this council.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks.
You're next. Pat, can you give your perception?
Yes, I agree with Kim. And it's so nice to be able to express your opinion and ask opinions and so on without fear of violating the Brown Act. And that, that's something that, but also I, I was enlightened in so many areas about the possibilities for improvement and you know, particularly, I thought Jeff had some excellent ideas on enhancing the city's effectiveness and efficiency. And I, just overall, I thought it was very well done and I really appreciate everybody's input. Thank you. And especially Gail.
Oh, thanks, thanks. There's no need to comment on that. Thank you. Jeff, I mean, Alex, I'm looking at Alex.
I, I, I share the sentiment, you know, I'm always so concerned about the Brown Act and keeping us out of, out of trouble. It's really nice to have a free-flowing conversation and switch from topic to topic to topic. I always thought it was really nice to sort of work with and get to know our new council members a little bit. And so, yeah, I, I very much enjoy the informality, if you will, and, and the idea to sort of think big picture as opposed to, you know, agenda reports and noticing and all that kind of stuff. It's kind of a, it, it, it's a, it's a nice, nice opportunity.
Thank you. Jeff? Be unmuted without even being asked. Way to go.
I think there's three or four things. First and foremost, you know, getting new council members here and getting them a little more in tune as to what our process has been in the past. And then a little more detail on some of the, the things we're working on and the, and the way we have to work on them as a staff. That segues into the second thing, and that is having the dialogue between electeds and staff and our perspective and bandwidth and our priorities in, in comparison to years and how we can work on that. And then probably third is, it's nice to have Chris Berquen on the screen as the acting chief. He's earned it and this gives him a little more insight into the administrative ends of the city and of the police department. And I'm just pleased that he has the opportunity to wear those stars at this meeting, this go-around, and I welcome him.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is of, of this session is being able to provide some focus and really setting the conditions for success. I think that's huge that we're able to do that as a council for the staff. The other thing is you look at, I kind of alluded to it before, you look at the amount of work that has just been placed upon the staff. And, you know, you try and put that into perspective that you look at the quality, I mean, I look around this Zoom meeting at the quality of staff that we have and the limited number of staff that we have and the just incredible work that they do. And I think it's one thing to have the city council recognize that. But I also think we have a responsibility as electeds to make sure that the public understands that too. That they are so limited in the number of people that we have and they do such a fantastic job. And some of the things that I've been hearing lately are, are hard for me to hear. So I think we have that responsibility as electeds to go beyond just thanking them for everything that they do and recognizing it, but also making sure that the, the public recognize that. And in addition to that, we have the responsibility to make sure that we're not placing undue burden upon the staff as well. Realizing that they have so much to do, it's very easy, just as you've seen in this, this session, where you can just keep piling it on top of them. And we have to be cognizant of that as well.
Great, thank you. Scott? Chris?
Well, I want to thank you first for inviting me and thank you, real chief, for all you said. I wish the public could see what the city council and staff looks like in this setting. Normally it's at city council meetings, which are a lot more formal and it's dare I say, maybe less fun than this. I think I like this. I like this a lot. Don't feel like you got to wait till the next one to let me know something's wrong. You know how to get ahold of me and I look forward to being in the next one if I'm still in this position. Thank you.
Really glad you were able to be here, Chris. And just note, this is recorded. So, you know, it, it takes a while for it to download, but I'll send that, Jeff, should I send that to Karen to then send out the recording?
Yeah.
I guess you, you put it on your website? Is that what you do? Okay, I just know, I've, I've had it downloaded in, in the cloud. And then I have to wait. Sometimes it takes quite a while for it to get all done. So I will send that to Karen. So the public, all you need to do is to the public is say, you know, some of you were able to come and, and be on the phone and, and have a little sense of it, but you'll get a much clearer sense of it when you see it recorded and that it will be available. So before, before Allison takes her position, first of all, I'm, I'm really sorry that John got tied up and wasn't able to come back to us, but he seemed to be very much in touch with, with the way the, the group was going. And you've done a great job to be through, you know, a couple of minutes till two. And like I say, unless Allison decides to talk till 2:30, it's not going to last that long. And I want to congratulate you. As I said, coming from a small town in Kansas myself, I really appreciate in a very special way, small towns and how much work it is. And you've done a good job and you've done a good, good job of patting on the back this, the staff that deserve it. So Allison, it's all yours and I hope that I will get to see you in July.
Great. Well, first and foremost, thank you to Marilyn and Gail for coming and kind of helped guiding us. The highlight for me is, you know, being able to reflect together and translate policy into action. My favorite session was the one where we were all together. Because, you know, anyway, I like, I like when we're all together and all of our voices are heard. And so that was really the, the highlight for me. I, Jeff has got this, I have no doubt. And and I'm so grateful that you are here with us, you know, to walk through kind of where we're coming from as well as the direction we want to go. And you are that, the person that does that for us. So I'm glad you're here and it's a pleasure to have Chris here as well. And we give the police department one or two things to do. So it, and Alex as well, you know, he and I had been talking about municipal code and so it was wonderful to have him here because that affects his job as well. And so I just want to say thank you to Kim and Scott, you know, your first one. And it went off without a hiccup. And Pat, of course, has, has done a few of these. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody for spending the day, allocating the day to this very important process that helps move the city forward with the limited resources and the limited, you know, personnel we have. We're small but mighty. And I look forward to seeing what comes up. It sounds like Jeff and I have some stuff to look at for agendas. So I'm going to stop there. And thank you all for coming. I'm, last time we did this, this was almost a year ago. We were also early. So we do well.
You're good.
Yeah, so thank you all and stay safe out there and stay dry and we'll see you at the end of February.
Great. And would somebody contact John about the fact that we got through? I mean, he'll get the record, of course, today, but that should happen. Scott, did you put your hand up or did I think you did? Oh, okay. Oh, you were waving goodbye. All right, goodbye. Thank you for having us. As always, we enjoyed being with you. It's a great place to go and a great group of you. So I am ending the meeting right now.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.